A regular meeting of the Hollister City Council. Meeting is now called to order. It is 6:40 PM. Councilmember Morales, could you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible)
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 City Attorney, is there any reportable action from closed session?
Nothing to report, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Before we go to public input, I just want to read a quick script here. I need to address the manner and decorum of our meetings and issue a warning in this regard. Meetings must be in an orderly and efficient manner without willful disruption so that the business of the city can be conducted. While the Council is more than willing to listen to comments from the public, it must be done at the appropriate time and should be done up at the podium with the microphone so that your words can be heard and recorded properly as part of the meeting. There cannot be interruptions when councilmembers are speaking or audience members calling names, chanting, or yelling out. If you do so, a warning will be issued to you, and if behavior continues, you might be asked to leave the chambers. If there is too much disruption from members of the audience, depending on severity, it may be necessary to call a recess, clear chambers, or even cancel the meeting. I'd like to ask for your courtesy and cooperation in this regard so it won't be necessary to take any of these steps. Thank you. So this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, and if you're joining via Zoom using a cellphone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note, state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items that are not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, Mayor Casey, we currently have three public, four public comments. The first one is Emmanuel Bueno, followed by Selena Stotter.
Hello, everyone. Emmanuel Bueno, also Hollister, California. Greetings, Ms. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Emmanuel Bueno, representing Bullock Boxing. First, I would like to thank those who continue to support us behind the scenes and to those who have helped us in our times of financial struggles. In 2022, in the time of our new gym construction, it was the resources provided by you all who voted in favor of granting us a donation to help build our gym as well as create champions. As I speak currently, there are new champions being shaped. Our coach does not know we are here. We are here to try, well, I'm hearing, and here to help him. Mr. Lopez, who requires no introduction, has served the community for 30-plus years, shaping productive citizens within and out of this community. We have a boxing show on July 13th here in Hollister. I have personally seen firsthand the stress that has carried on into this man's arms. I have gone business to business looking for sponsors as well as selling positional ads for a plant fit that we are giving to audience members as they come into the show. The expenses of the Mattson Gym at the high school are just the sort of the expenses that are overwhelming, Mr. Lopez. We are here asking for help for a man who has been a father figure to many in the past who is now to this generation of fighters, one abuelo, a grandfather figure. Besides me are just a few of the champions to come out of our gym. Our coach has done a lot for us, and now we are here trying to help him. We hope he can help us and make it just a little easier for our program as well as our coach. Thank you for hearing our words. We thank the mayor and the council for your time.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Selena Stotler, followed by Susan Hilden.
Good evening, Mayor Casey and council. My name is Selena Stotler. I am your Integrated Waste Manager. We have a few items on the agenda today, but while I am here, I thought I would make a quick public comment regarding an upcoming event. This Saturday, February 10th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we are operating a designated pickup site for litter cleanup supplies to the community. Staff will be stationed at 2301 Technology Parkway in Hollister, and we will be offering trash grabbers, gloves, trash bags, and vests to the community for day use. We encourage attendees to clean up a safe location of their choice, such as a city park or neighborhood. These supplies are actually offered via renting, free of charge, all year round, so this is a means to promote that ongoing program as well. We would like to invite you and the greater community to this event and further help beautify San Benito County. I printed a flyer, so I'll provide this to the clerk and hope this can be distributed to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Susan Hilden, followed by Victor Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor Casey and staff and city council. My name is Susan Hilden. I stand here before you tonight to, probably directly with Chief Reno, so because of the fact that he is over the animal control services. We currently have a contract that is, I believe, in the works. I think it's done, maybe not signed, maybe not completed yet, but it is, I believe, approved for the SNPUS services, and this is strictly speaking for feral population. We have an extreme need for domestic animals, too, for low-cost spay and neuter, but right now I'm speaking about ferals on behalf of Feral's sake, who I'm a board member. We have a current contract for 2024 that was submitted for $4,000, which includes all vaccinations for these cats, 40 cats, 12 clinics, for a total of $45,000. I understand, Chief, that the contract was pushed back to last year's pricing of $37.50. Last year's pricing of $37.50 included the vaccinations that were standard, rabies, FERCP. If that's the case, I'm here tonight to discuss with all of you the implications of 40 cats being spayed and neutered in this community with the hard work of trappers and us missing a rabies vaccination, which, in the own words of your animal control officers, is required in this county. So I did the calculations from 2023 to 2024. Melanie Scherer, who is the founder and originator of SNP, from 2023 at $37.50 to 2024 at $4,000 is a 6.7% increase. That is a one-man operating theater. It comes in, sometimes two vets, a full technical staff, spays and neuters 40 ferals, and gives them their vaccinations, $4,000. So right now, we are without vaccinations. When this contract starts, it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable by terms of your own Hollister Animal Care Services. It is unacceptable. Rabies is a disease that can be spread to humans, and this is the most vulnerable population of animals you can possibly think of, not by any fault of their own, it's by the fault of everybody, including me. It's our fault that these animals are out of control, being bred, spayed, not spayed, let to roam free. I want to bring to attention, too, if I may, just by virtue of looking at increases, we're all being hit with inflation. It's across the board. There's nobody not affected. So...
Sorry, time's up.
Thank you. What do we have here, two minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Victor Gomez.
Honorable Mayor Casey, members of the council, this is Victor Gomez. I'm here speaking on behalf of a new coalition of cannabis operators, the San Benito Cannabis Alliance and its members. First, we're happy to see more renewals on tonight's consent agenda, happy to see these operators continuing to operate in Hollister. But the reason I'm here speaking with you is the Cannabis Alliance was formed to advocate for sound policies at the local level and to advocate for a strong legal cannabis market. A few of our members that are currently legally licensed operators in the city are very concerned about the city's cannabis program and the ordinance, and we would like to request a partnership with the city in the form of either a council ad hoc committee that includes two council members, staff, and the alliance, or to start, maybe a staff and alliance-based committee that can bring to you some recommended changes to the cannabis program that the city council could consider. As you're aware, the cannabis black market is thriving and undercutting legal operations like those members of this alliance, even with the potential or threat of fentanyl-tainted cannabis that is still happening. San Benito Cannabis Alliance members pay nearly $1 million to the city in cannabis taxes, to the general fund, and much more to the state of California, yet we continue to struggle and to stay afloat. Recently, two retailers in the city of San Jose closed their doors because of the burdens of the legal, on the legal market. We would like you, just like you, we want to see a thriving legal market that works for operators, government, and consumers, but we can't do that without you. So I hope you consider my request here today, and I certainly look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Natalie Day.
(inaudible) members of the city council, Chief Renozo. My name is Natalie Day. I've been a feral cat advocate for approximately seven years. In those years, I've participated in trapping, carrying, and fixing nearly 3,000 feral cats in this community. Like all of you, I've seen the transition of our sleepy town to one of hustle and bustle most hours of the day. The increase in population has resulted in significantly more animals in San Benito County. In response, the Hollister Animal Care Services cut services, no longer intaking cats, friendly or feral, unless they're injured or ill, and only between the hours of 10:00 and 12:30 and 1:30 and 5:00, because calling after hours about an injured cat, you generally don't get any response. In the meantime, the live release percentage has increased dramatically. By not intaking the most vulnerable population, feral and community cats, the live release numbers look great. Catch and kill doesn't work, and ignoring them doesn't work, and it's also extremely inhumane. Feral cats are not some invasive species to be eradicated. If anyone has ever had an unfixed cat, they have contributed to this problem, and I have yet to talk to anybody who's denied culpability in this. We have all contributed at one time or another with an unfixed animal. My love for ferals is well-known, but you don't have to love or even like feral cats to support their right to be on the planet. When we trap, it's a one-shot deal. Everything that can be done to improve the lives of these animals must be taken at that time, including vaccines. I was notified that vaccines are not included in the new SNPUS contract, and historically, the city has always provided those. The FBRCP vaccine protects these cats from dying painful and horrible deaths and counters all the previous work we've done. The R stands for rhinotracheitis, a disease of the upper respiratory system causing conjunctivitis and nasal discharge. Conjunctivitis is responsible for about 98% of all the eye removals we do, and if left unchecked, these cats go blind or simply starve to death because when they can't smell, they won't eat. The C stands for the calicy virus, which also causes URI symptoms, but it also causes ulcers in the mouth and in the throat, again, so they don't eat. It also causes painful swelling in their joints and making it hard for them to move, and they don't move around or go get food. The symptoms can persist up to six weeks, which is really awful. The P stands for panleukopenia, which is the cat equivalent of parvo. Parvo is 91% fatal in unvaccinated dogs, and it is the same for cats. The gastrointestinal nightmare, causing abdominal pain, vomiting, bloody diarrhea, and will eventually lead to death. There is no cure, but vaccinating prevents contracting it. It takes about four painful days of suffering for a two-month-old kitten to die, because it just happened to me in my garage. That's an extremely long time to be in pain, and had I known what she had, I would have put her down much sooner. I'm convinced that the moral and ethical treatment of our community's animals is not a priority for the Hollister Animal Shelter. How can you call yourself animal care services when you don't care what happens to these cats? Is it just dogs that deserve to be protected from these viruses? I get that life isn't fair, but it needs to be for these neglected animals. I urge the council to put pressure on Renozo, and if that doesn't help, I implore you to take the necessary funds from the general fund and complete the contract as it has always been.
The next public speaker is Stacy McGrady.
all the previous work we've done. The R stands for rhinotracheitis, a disease of the upper respiratory system, causing conjunctivitis and nasal discharge. Conjunctivitis is responsible for about 98% of all the eye removals we do, and if left unchecked, these cats go blind or simply starve to death, because when they can't smell, they won't eat. The C stands for the calicy virus, which is also causes URI symptoms, but it also causes ulcers in the mouth and in the throat, again, so they don't eat. It also causes painful swelling in their joints and making it hard for them to move, and they don't move around or go get food. The symptoms can persist up to six weeks, which is really awful. The P stands for panleukopenia, which is the cat equivalent of parvo. Parvo is 91% fatal in unvaccinated dogs, and it is the same for cats. The gastrointestinal nightmare, causing abdominal pain, vomiting, bloody diarrhea, and will eventually lead to death. There is no cure, but vaccinating prevents contracting it. It takes about four painful days of suffering for a two-month-old kitten to die, because it just happened to me in my garage. That's an extremely long time to be in pain, and had I known what she had, I would have put her down much sooner. I'm convinced that the moral and ethical treatment of our community's animals is not a priority for the Hollister Animal Shelter. How can you call yourself Animal Care Services when you don't care what happens to these cats? Is it just dogs that deserve to be protected from these viruses? I get that life isn't fair, but it needs to be for these neglected animals. I urge the council to put pressure on Renozo, and if that doesn't help, I implore you to take the necessary funds from the general fund...
Thank you.
And complete the contract as it has always been.
The next public speaker is Stacy McGrady.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I live in the county area where we also have plenty of feral cats and litters of dogs that are being dumped on a regular basis. So I just want to say that I really support Susan Paulson and Melanie Scherer and the SNPUS. Prevention is clearly much cheaper than treatment, and if you might refer to the 2022-2023 Civil Grand Jury reports, during which time I was the foreperson, we expressed our concerns regarding the animal shelter's refusal to accept feral cats, which is an ongoing concern. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Those are all the public speakers we have.
Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do any members of the council have any brief questions or comments on any of the items in consent? Quick question, or?
Just on A3, I just would like to pull that to make comments on that.
Which item was that?
A3.
Three?
Correct.
Okay. And Councilmember Morales, did you have a quick question or want to pull something? On which? So you want to pull them, or you just have a quick question? You'll pull them, okay.
That was five and six.
All right. So if I could get a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of items three, five, and six?
So moved.
And Mayor Casey, we do not have any public comments for this item.
Sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
City Clerk, or through the mayor, can we reflect that Councilman Rosentis is not present at this time for this vote, please?
Yes, I've included that in the minutes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion then carries 4-0. All right. So let's go to item A3, ratify appointments to fill airport advisory commission vacancies.
I would just like to say that, you know, it's, it's, it's good to see that all the airport commission seats are filled. Look forward to, with our new director, and great things to happen, and congratulations, Andres.
Do, any other comments, or do we need to review then? Or just go ahead and take a vote? That it? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Four to zero. Let's move on to item five. It's resolution number 2024-5, a resolution to the city council of the city of Hollister, renewing a regulatory permit for Hollister Holistics to operate a cannabis cultivation facility at 802, 1802 Shelton Drive.
So I'm going to do five and six together, because the comments are the same for both.
Okay.
So I, I will be asking, in my G2 report, to bring back the policy. I'm very concerned about the policy, the way that it's written, the way that it pretty much forces city council to just approve the operations of cannabis. And so I will be asking for, later on, for a deeper dive that includes bringing back the policy, and I, I will, there will be plenty of time, so I'm not very happy in, in which, you know, we are just provided not a lot of information, but the policy is not written in a way that we can actually do a deep-dup analysis. So those are my comments for five and six.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would mirror the vice mayor's comments as well, I'm sorry, the former vice mayor's comments, councilmember Morales's comments, and it did come up in public comment about a cannabis ad hoc committee. I would absolutely support that and recommend that councilmember Morales and myself be appointed to that to address these bigger issues that seem to be coming up consistently. Thank you, Mayor.
So, do we have any further? I don't, I don't know if we need a report, then. I think it's just more concern. So let's take the first, item five. Can I get a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. All right. And for item six, which is the resolution of city council, city Hollister, renewing the regulatory permit for fault line manufacturing to operate a cannabis manufacturing facility at 1785 San Felipe Road. So can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. Moving on. So we're going to move to our public hearing. We're going to do ordinance number 1244, an ordinance of the city of Hollister, amending chapter 8.12 of the municipal code to update non-exclusive franchise agreements for the collection of solid waste to comply with SB 1383. Public Works, and we have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, William Vye, Public Works Director. The item here before you tonight is a proposed ordinance to update Title VIII, Chapter 8.12, Sections 8.12.010 and 015 to comply with SB 1383 requirements. The recent changes in state law require certain language and provisions in the Hollister Municipal Code, Chapter 8.12. These changes will align Hollister Municipal Code with San Benito County Code and Cal Recycle requirements for SB 1383. The proposed changes below are a change to one definition in Section 8.12.010 and changes to Section 8.12.1015 to align with the memorandum of understanding between the city of Hollister and San Benito County and Cal Recycle requirements. And the MOU is, is a, an item a little bit later in the agenda. So basically, what we're trying to do is align ourselves with San Benito County so that we have an agreement as, and, and this pertains to the roll-off containers that you see. Instead of, instead of granting non-exclusive franchise agreements, it's going to be a non-exclusive permit process, so that the county can issue permits for haulers to do the roll-off containers, and the city can also issue those permits. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from council? Any questions? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing then on this item. City Clerk, do we have public comment?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. So let's open this for any council deliberation or discussion. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss? No? Can I get a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Absane.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to ordinance number 1245, an ordinance of the city of Hollister, amending the city of Hollister Municipal Code, Section 2.04.180, manner of addressing city council, time limit of Chapter 2.04, city council of Title II, administration and personnel. City Clerk, could we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor Casey, this is just an update to our Hollister Municipal Code to reflect practices that we're already doing and to codify it in the municipal code, the first of which, if there is a member of the public speaking that is, their comments are being translated by an actual person here, then we double that time, so it has that. It also allows that it, the public comments are up to three minutes. So when we do have multiple speakers, quite a few, we are able to lower that number, and so it just puts that into the code, and that's the only changes.
Okay. Do we have any questions from council? Okay. Do we have any public comment? Oh, I guess we have to open public hearing, excuse me. Do we have any public comment?
There are no public speakers for this item.
Okay, then let's close that public hearing. And do we have any discussion or deliberation on this item? No? All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. All right. And our last ordinance, number 1246, an ordinance of the city of Hollister, amending city of Hollister Municipal Code, Section 2.08.090, removal of office of Chapter 2.08, city manager of Title II, administration and personnel. City Clerk, can I have a staff report?
I'll take this one. Okay. So this one amends the municipal code to provide for, for a fifth supermajority vote of the council to terminate the city manager with, without cause.
All right. Do we have any questions from council?
Yeah, and it does comply with his, it's the same as what's represented in his contract. It's just being revised to reflect those provisions.
That makes sense. Do we have any questions? No? All right. Then I'm going to open public hearing on this item. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor Casey, we have no public comments for this item.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, then. Do we have any further discussion or deliberation? No? Can I get a motion, then?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries four to one. All right. We're going to move on to council business, and there's been a request to move item six to the beginning of our council business. So the item six is the resolution of the city council of the city of Hollister approving the memorandum of understanding with San Benito County for the establishment and administration of a non-exclusive permit system for the collection and diversion of solid waste. Public Works, can we have a staff report?
So I'll go ahead and set this up to say, William, a walk across the room. So the item that William just recently presented a few minutes ago, this is the MOU that would support that action, so we brought this second, assuming that if it were passed, we would have this opportunity to bring the MOU forward. Had council given different direction, then we would have pulled this item. So I've asked Selena with Integrated Waste to provide an update on this and kind of walk it through and, and answer any questions you may have. So with that, Selena?
Thank you so much. Good evening again. Oh, thank you. Let me try to... Perfect. Okay. Joining me today, I have Catherine Ramirez, our staff analyst, and Rose Radford, our solid waste consultant with R3 Consulting. For today's discussion, separate from the public hearing that we had today, but in relation to, we are going to be sharing a little bit about the non-exclusive hauling permit system that we're proposing, and a little bit about the current agreement system we have. And this is all in relation to solid waste collection in order to assist the Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency with mandatory state reporting requirements through a permit system. Before we take a dive into this permit system, we recognize there's likely a need for some background on integrated waste, because I think it's been over a year since we last presented to the council. So who is integrated waste? We are a division within the county of San Benito's Resource Management Agency, and we're furthermore a regional agency under the 1995 Joint Powers Agreement between the cities of Hollister and San Juan Batista and the county of San Benito. This agency, with county as lead, was formed as part of a unified effort to reduce the amount of solid waste disposed in permitted facilities, permitted disposal facilities, and to comply with California's Integrated Waste Management Act, AB 939. In 2006, the regional agency members entered into a cost-sharing agreement to establish cost-sharing to fund the administration of integrated waste, which is based on population size. And this agreement further established the Integrated Waste Local Task Force, which acts as an advisory committee reviewing quarterly expenditures, annual budget, and councilmember Rick Perez is the delegate to this committee, and councilmember Dolores Morales is the alternate. And with that background history, I'm going to now pass it off to Catherine. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. The code amendments that you had just adopted do not impact the exclusive contract with, that recology holds with the cities of Hollister, San Juan Batista, and the county of San Benito. Instead, the NIFA, which is Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement, is a competitive program that grants haulers the non-exclusive right to collect solid waste in temporary roll-off debris box service within the city limits. By way of illustration, let's say the recent storms caused a resident damage on their property, which caused significant debris in need of disposal. This resident would likely utilize a roll-off delivered by an approved hauler to their property for placement... of the material damaged by the storm, as this would not fit in their regular recology bins used for weekly collection service. The residents have their choice of haulers from our approved hauler list administered by WM. All approved haulers have agreements with the county, and these agreements require the haulers to pay the city a franchise fee based on total gross revenue of the service provided, and Hollister's fee is 5%. The current NIFA process between the county and cities to monitor hauler solid waste collection has been in effect for several decades without revision. Our goal with these code revisions and MOU between the regional agency members is to formalize our relationship and to streamline the overall process for staff and for the haulers. These revisions will further our compliance with AB 939 and newer SB 1383 regulations and reporting requirements. We're going to skip over this unless anybody has any questions at the end. And then, who needs NIFA? Any solid waste hauler that collects solid waste, recyclables, organic materials, and/or construction and demolition materials in San Benito County, Hollister, and San Juan Batista need to have a NIFA. As mentioned, there are current reporting, monthly reporting requirements and payments that need to be made from the haulers. And IWM reviews the monthly reports and administers applicable payments to the cities. Currently, we do have a rule exemption for SB 1383, and it's slated to expire in December of 2026. The proposed permit language anticipates these changes, and there are also existing reporting requirements outside of SB 1383 that are required now for all three jurisdictions. And through this permit system, we will be better equipped to report on behalf of all of the agencies. I'm going to hand this off to Rose.
All right. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here today. I'm Rose Radford with R3 Consulting, and I'm the consultant for IWM, which is your joint powers authority. So again, tonight, you're just looking at the memorandum of understanding between you and the county, authorizing the county to administer this new permit system. And as Catherine mentioned, this is a formalization of the existing process, and again, affects only the debris boxes that are distributed within your jurisdiction. What we are looking at is a significant overhaul on the existing NIFA system and replacing that with a more modern permit that facilitates compliance with the state's requirements, particularly in unincorporated county, including standardization of the containers themselves and improving the reporting that is provided by the haulers, which IWM needs to meet the state's reporting requirements. And I think with that, I'm going to hand that back to Selena.
Almost wrapped up about here. Oh, never mind. My apologies.
Okay. Then we have, okay. The effort to move away from an agreement and towards a permitting process has been evolving since the beginning of 2022 to the present. During this period, we have updated the local task force at five of their meetings through presentations and have sought their input and direction. We recently sat down with your city manager and legal counsel to get their input on the MOU, code revisions, and the draft permit. In December, we sent a letter and an email to all approved haulers of the anticipated changes and invited them to attend the December 14th LTF meeting to learn more about the changes, and also for them to have an opportunity to provide public comment. At the December meeting, the LTF provided direction to... LTF provided direction to staff to move forward with the recommendation to the cities and county to bring forward the MOU and the ordinance changes. In February, we sent out another letter to haulers and invited them to this city council meeting so that they may have an opportunity to hear what we have brought before you this evening and to provide public comment. And so with the next steps that we have is tonight, this meeting, and then we hope to come back on February, on February twentieth for a second public hearing. And then we will be providing haulers in March with workshops and making sure that we sit down with them until they understand this whole process so that it can be successful for them. And we are hoping that the new hauling permit will go into effect on July first of twenty twenty-four. I'll hand this over to Selena.
Okay. And that wraps up our presentation. We are recommending that the council adopt the memorandum of understanding between the Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency members for the establishment of this hauling permit system. And thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to take any questions as well.
Thank you, mayor. So you mentioned in your presentation that at least on one occasion, you reached out to the haulers to come and meet with you as staff to discuss this process. But what you didn't say is how many actually showed up?
None. None. We've received one call from RJR Recycling, a local hauler here in town, about inquiries related to these changes. And most haulers are, if not all, are familiar with these because this is state-required.
Right, that was going to be my next question. And so I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes good faith effort has been made to reach out. But again, this isn't breaking news. This is something probably many other counties are already doing. And if they're doing work in Santa Clara County, Monterey County, they're probably familiar with it, I presume?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all ahead, mayor.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comment?
Mayor Casey, we have no public comments for this item.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or deliberation? No? Can I get a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion carries five zero. So we're going to go back to item one. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, resolution of city council of the City of Hollister, naming a park bench at the Jerry Gabe Park as Sandy Gabe dedicated twenty twenty-four.
Tina, before you begin, Paul, if I could ask, on item C two, we do have a few photos that are part of the packet. If we could throw those up, I'm sure Tina, it'd be helpful and it's part of her discussion tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Casey and council. The city council of the City of Hollister, through resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one oh six, adopted on June seventh, twenty twenty-one, established a policy for naming and renaming the city parks, recreation facilities, and special features that align with our community's interest and enhance the values and heritage of Hollister. During a Parks and Recreation Committee, Recreation Commission meeting on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, commissioners unanimously, unanimously recommended naming a park bench at the Jerry Gabe Dog Park as a Sandy Gabe dedicated twenty twenty-four. Public notice was issued at the park, on social media, and at the Pauline Valdivia Memorial Center, Community Center, to inform residents about the proposed bench name. And this policy ensures no financial impact on the city, as all costs related to the signage, installation, and replacement will be covered by the sponsoring individual. Staff does recommend naming a park bench at the Jerry Gabe Park as a Sandy Gabe dedicated twenty twenty-four. Are any questions?
Do we have any questions? No? Do we have any public comment?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay, so is there any further discussion or deliberation? No? Then can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item two. Receive a presentation on the Dunn Park Tennis and Pickleball Courts and provide staff with possible direction.
Thank you. Good evening again. This is an informational report to the city council as it relates to our Dunn Park Tennis and Pickleball Courts. The Dunn Park Court resurfacing project initially is set to start this early February, but I don't think it would have due to the rain. But is, it is currently on hold as our city council has directed staff to explore additional options suggested by the public during multiple meetings. The contractor has warned of possible rescheduling to May due to commitments to other clients if a prompt decision is not made. Before you, there were three proposals that were presented. Option one is, I'll just see, is up, and that was the original proposal where there was a cost of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to the city to resurface three pickleball courts. And we would remain having our two tennis courts that exist right there. That project for a five-year span would be at forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Tina, if I could jump in, it's the resurfacing of the whole, all of the tennis courts and the pickleball court.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
The second option is the resurfacing and the patching of all the courts. This, we'll pull it this, oh, do I do that? Sorry, Paul. Oh, it's up there. Thank you. This is the resurfacing and patching of all the courts, too. The striping of the four new pickleball courts in the center court. And that would be installation of the nets and posts. And that total project for the resurfacing and the four pickleball courts would be fifty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then the total project cost would be seventy-two, seventy-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for a five-year span. Then we have option three, and this is the resurfacing of all, all the courts, the striping of seven pickleball courts, which has one tennis ball, tennis court. The total cost is at fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars with a total of five-year span of seventy-five thousand and thirty dollars. Before the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Parks and Recreation Department provided a USTA-supported tennis program for around a hundred of our youth. This was a free program to them. And we, I just want to let our council know that when we develop the Fire Station Two Park, there are four pickleball courts that are a part of that grant and that we will build out there. Staff is seeking direction from the council regarding the tennis, the Dunn Park Court project.
All right, do we have questions? Councilmember Resendas?
Thank you, Tina. I think you did answer my questions. Number one was going to be, are we building any other pickleball courts? And you said that we are at the firehouse. And then is there any other pickleball courts that are available for the community to access here that you know of?
Not currently. I know that the, the high school is working on creating some options as well.
Okay. And then just remind me, because my, my memory is a little foggy. We already heard this item and we selected A option, right? Which one was it?
Originally, we selected the option number one.
Okay.
And then that evening, the, the community came forward and said, we would, we have another option. We'd like to add the fourth court on the left, well, my left-hand side. So the west side of the, the park, I mean, the courts, I'm sorry. They wanted to put a fourth pickleball court in there. And that was, we received that quote, and that quote was the same as option number two, the fifty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-three.
So which option did we settle on? I'm confused.
The first one, the first one is what was originally approved.
All right.
So I can jump in a little bit. So we had brought an item forward. We had received basically direction. We had some out, you know, some outreach from the community that came in. We were given direction to look at the second option as we were doing that before the second option came back to council. Or when we came back, then there was a request for, so it went from three, which was original, to four, then seven, which would then, if that final option that we were asked to explore were to be approved, then you would only have one functioning tennis court at Dunn Park. You would have, in the place of the two original other courts, you would have a court that has three pickleball courts and a court, and, and one of the courts that has four, for a total of seven. The, the, pickleball community did come in. They made quite a few public comments. I think that's what, you know, lent the council to give us direction. If there was the desire to give direction for option three, it is staff's recommendation to at least give the tennis community the opportunity to opine. That wasn't a formal process. They just came in, made some comments, and we got, you know, asked to do some further exploration. So I would think that if we were to go on a, on the third option, that would now remove one of the tennis courts, we would probably seek direction to at least engage with the tennis community.
And then if I heard your presentation correct, thank you, Mr. City Manager. We might be pushing this back even further because of, what was the rationale behind that? I'm sorry?
The, our contractor has mentioned that if a decision, you know, isn't made, then we would have to push this back to May, just because they have other response, they have other projects that they have to work.
And then we would essentially lose our place online. Is that the reason?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, mayor. So, thank you. The next round of pickleball courts, is that going to be at Caesar Chavez Park?
Yes, it is.
And when is that scheduled to open?
We have a timeline of November twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so year and a half?
Yes.
Yeah, so a while. And so do we know how often the tennis courts at Dunn Park have been used historically? I mean, I, I understand that a lot of this evolved post-COVID, but I certainly agree with the city manager about hearing from the tennis community. But on the other hand, do we even have a sense for how often they're used?
We visit the park frequently out there, and in the morning time, you'll see a lot of the pickleball players playing. But towards the afternoon and the evening time, there are some, the tennis community comes out and plays.
Okay, so they don't have to, it's just first come, first served?
Yes.
There's no reserving a court in advance?
Yes.
And so is there a possibility to create some sort of an agreement with the high school? My understanding is the high school's got some pretty nice tennis courts as well.
Yeah, they would have to make some improvements, and I believe that's something that they're looking at. You know, right now, most of the courts are, you know, before they did the upgrades, we were under a joint use agreement with them. Since the post-construction, that is not in place. But I think that there is a strong possibility of us putting that in place. They would just have to, you know, like us, tweak the courts and then do a little bit of lighting and, and a way to get in and out, right, that type of thing.
Right. So, and, and then that's my final question. Thank you, City Manager. It seems to me the last time the pickleball community was present to lobby this council, they also mentioned some lighting. I didn't see any lighting on any of these options. Was that factored into this or considered, or is this just during the daylight hours?
We've considered it, and we're working on quotes at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a different provider. So this is the, this is for the contractor. So we're looking at that simultaneously. I think regardless, we've got to get the lights fixed out there.
Right, right. And, and so, but by repairing the lights, I mean, I couldn't agree more with you. I mean, why wouldn't we? When the lights get repaired, would that have any impact on this project? Or is that not, not going to complicate things?
I don't think it would have an impact on the project.
Okay. Those are all my, all my questions for now. I have thoughts that I'll share later. Thank you, mayor.
Any other questions? Councilmember Press?
So I, I guess it's more of a comment.
We'll do that after public comment.
But so. Both comments.
Councilmember Morales, questions?
Can you please remind me, thank you, Tina, for the report. Can you please remind me where those monies coming from? Is it coming from our specialized account or?
Our park dedication fees?
Okay, thank you. That's all.
You're welcome.
An only question I have for you is between the options. So in option one, you're just restriping, basically, right, repaving, restriping. But option two, you know, there's four courts there instead of three, which would give an additional court. But why do we have to do the nets and all that additional work? Why, why was that included on the second option? Because that added a lot, you know, cost of pickleball nets, posts. But it wasn't on the first option. There was nothing about nets or posts. So what's the difference?
In the first option, those are existing pickleball.
So they already have, you're just.
And they have all the equipment.
Okay, shh down.
Yes.
Thank you. You have another question?
Okay.
So I was reading on the description of difference between one, two, and three. Are they all going to be resurfaced and all the cracks are going to be sealed? Because it only said it on two.
Oh, really? No, it's, the project first begins with resurfacing all courts, the whole court. I guess I just call it as one big, you know, the ports. But yes, it'll include all of that.
Regardless of the option, we looked at surfacing the whole thing and then annual maintenance.
I just have one more question for you, City Manager. When we were talking before, you mentioned something about going over a certain amount. Does that ring a bell if, if we go to another option? Was there some issue there?
Well, with option two and three, you get in, that, that'll push us slightly over the Cupco requirements. And so there's some additional work that we'll have to do on our end with some soliciting additional bids and whatnot.
Okay. So that might push out and not be able to do anything right now. It would push it out to at least May, maybe longer, to, to do the option two or three?
Yes, it could potentially push it out further than May.
Okay, gotcha. Do we have then any public comment?
Mayor Casey, there's no public comments for this item.
Okay, so let's bring it back for deliberation. Councilmember Resendas?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think we're going to go ahead and just stick to what we decided in the beginning. I think it was option one for a number of reasons. It sounds like Caesar Chavez Park is going to have how many pickleball courts?
Four.
All of them are going to be pickleball, so nothing for tennis players. And it sounds like the high school's considering converting some of their tennis courts into pickleball. So what, what I'm afraid of, I'll be quite honest with you, Tina, is that we convert all of these to pickle. We're going to have more pickle out there, and then they get lobbied at the high school, which is not in our jurisdiction, and they're going to have more pickle. Then where our tennis player is going to go. It's, we have to maintain the balance here. And it seems like I'm just going to stick with the first option for now, get the whole thing resurfaced, get some pickleball courts there, some at Sessort Chavez, and then hopefully some at the high school. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, mayor. I must have not been paying attention. I did not hear that the high school is going to convert courts to pickleball courts. Did, did I hear that?
They're exploring that.
They're exploring it, but there, there's no confirmation that that's in fact going to happen?
Yeah, I don't want to speak that solidly, but I would strongly feel that that will be coming.
Okay. I wouldn't want you to have to speak too solidly.
Yeah, I can't confirm, you know, what their action is. They could take something forward to their board of trustees and get.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I know that they're, they're actively exploring it.
So one of the questions I have is, once this is done, let us say that we find that we really don't have the interest in tennis that we do in pickleball. One of the things that's nice about this particular park is it's very centrally located. This is really a, a signature park, as I view it, for the City of Hollister. And so if, if we commit to the first option, and we find that there's a greater need, do we have a sense for what it would take in time and money to then convert one of the remaining tennis courts to pickleball courts? And by converting one, does that, is it equal one-to-one ratio, or is it one-to-two? Or how's that work?
I thought Dave was speaking. No, I looked in the corner of my eye. It could be a possibility for the three pickleball courts. Initially, it was around a twelve thousand dollar project, but I think that that would increase just due to inflation. So I would, I mean, it could be done, and I would recommend that we do some sort of a survey out there to our, our community.
Right.
And in addition to that, work with our contractor and see what that cost would be.
So option one, we get three pickleball courts? Is that what I'm seeing there?
Yes.
And, and what's, how many in option two?
There are four. There would be four in the center court.
Okay. Okay, and then there'd still be two tennis courts?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm leaning towards two, because more is better, but it's not necessarily seven. And I would like to know, it would be really nice. I mean, I hear that pickleball is the end thing, and it's going to be, heck, I just saw it on ESPN yesterday, you know, along with bowling and beanbag throwing. And so, I would like to explore what additional costs would be if we find that tennis isn't really being used. And again, I presume the pickleball is first come, first served?
Yes.
It might be nice to have some sort of a process to reserve a court. And I guess my final thoughts would be, I absolutely would love to see the lighting get fixed there, because it's going to add to the value of the park, and probably enhance safety as well. So, those are my thoughts.
We're actively working on that, that's within my spending authority, and we're just getting that done.
Perfect, I love that. And so, I'd go for two with four, would be my point at this point. Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Press.
When was the last time that we were in agreement with the high school for the tennis courts?
I'm going to say 2017, 2018. And when COVID happened, it was the decision to, the city manager at the time asked that we don't have that agreement to cancel the agreement, so we sent a letter to them, canceling the agreement with them.
I personally like option two. It still keeps two tennis courts. I live right there, I see the pickleballers in the morning, and I see the tennis ballers at night, or in the evening, afternoon, evening. And I see a combined use, and I think two courts of tennis and four courts of pickleball is appropriate, and plus the additive ones around the city, so.
Councilmember Morales.
So I just want to make sure I understand, so if we do go with option two, wasn't that going to then create delays?
It could potentially create some delays if we exceed the 60,000.
Yeah, there's just some additional work that needs to be done, from the bidding standpoint.
And we don't have any speakers on this item. I don't know how important it is, I'm not sure what was more important to our community, to have it immediately, or to have delays if they have other options?
The conversations that I have with our, especially our pickleball community, they would want it done immediately. That's what they're asking for, just from conversations.
Thank you. So if that's the case, then I would, I'm inclined to go with option one, to accommodate our community.
Let's see. So I like option two, I don't like the delay, and remind me, Tina, when we were first talking about this, the repaving, was there a safety issue there with the courts' cracks and things, or is it still fairly smooth? I just was curious about that when we were first discussing repaving.
We've had reports of people getting, being injured out in the court, the way it exists currently, yes.
Yeah, especially the, you know, having, you know, more, becoming so popular. So for that reason, I would probably go with option one, especially if the community is wanting it sooner than later. As Councilmember Burns said, I think we could revisit if it becomes that popular that we need to do more. I think we could look back at it and maybe repave another court, or restripe another court, or whatever. But for now, this would preserve the two tennis courts and still give them a smooth surface, quickly. So I would prefer option one.
Yes.
You know what, there's people that are wanting, there's trees, their trees trimmed right away, but they have to wait. And I think it's, it's, it's safer either way, but to me, it makes more sense. It just makes sense to have four courts instead of three there. That just makes sense. I mean, I see the use there. I don't know how often you guys go to Dunn Park, but.
Yeah.
I too support the four, and clearly, we're outnumbered three to two here, and so it'll be one. Having said that, though, could we reach out to, because I'm not convinced that to do four versus three is a, it doesn't look like there's, this isn't rocket science. I'm sure it's more complicated than it appears, but at the end of the day, if we've already contracted with the contractor, we're on their calendar, really, it seems to be a scheduling issue. And so, if they can do four in the same timeframe, I mean, the bottom line is, we're into winter right now anyway. I seriously doubt you're going to find people out there playing pickleball today. And so, again, I think what I'm hearing this council say is there's a greater concern for injury and being delayed, but really, if we're talking May, and we're already in February, when were they scheduled to start this work?
The beginning of February.
The beginning of February, right.
It was supposed to start in October. That's when we brought this item to council, but we had delays there at that time due to the cold, from the cold weather. So we, I asked, could we be first on the, you know, in 2024, and they said absolutely. So we're the first of their project, but we've kind of put it on delay right now. I called and let them know that a decision hopefully will be made today, and that I would contact him and see how we can move forward.
Right, so my question would be, why don't we ask the contractor, if we opt for four courts, it seems to me the contractor's going to make more money on the deal. And the bottom line is, if they can do it at the same timeframe, why wouldn't we do that? Would be my point.
Could we let the city manager weigh in, I think there's.
Yeah, just where the time challenge comes in, is that, you know, the original court, we got our quotes that we were supposed to get. As we get into the higher threshold, we're going to have to go back and get quotes for the additional work. There's not an assumption that the vendor that we were ready to go with may necessarily provide the lowest quote, so we would have to go through that process again, which, why we do that, you know, today's the beginning of February, right? So that's where that comes in. It's not a tremendous amount of extra work, but from a, they need to get us on a schedule, because, you know, they're scheduled out, and they have their crew, that's where that piece comes in. So just want to be clear with that.
Councilmember.
And then, if you can remind me, did we adopt a resolution authorizing for option one? Or was it just to put it out to bid?
At that time, when I, when we first did the presentation, it was option one was this, and then the courts, I can't remember the.
I'm just wondering.
That material, the block, I can't think of the material that was used.
Because then it's going to have to come back to another council meeting, it's a $24,000 difference. It doesn't have to come back to another council meeting?
No, it's within my spending authority.
Got it, okay.
Any other comments, or? I'm actually leaning towards changing my vote to option two, because looking at our weather, and the time for being able to do this anyway, we may be able to go through the process. And I don't mind investing a little bit more to get four courts, if, you know, if we're not as concerned about the safety issue. So, yeah, I think, I think I'd rather go with option two, so.
Would this be considered being in a pickle?
Yeah, so I just want to, you know, we, I want to put out there, we may get someone that, you know, as we say, hey, take a look at this, look at this, give us a price, they could come in lower and be in a position where maybe they can't do it till July, so, you know, I'm not, I can't say for certain when it will get done, if we go this route, because I have to go secure additional, you know, quotes and find vendors, and go through that process, so.
I'll take the heat.
Yeah. We understand that we, that timeliness is, you know, a concern, so.
Well, I think, given the number, the sheer number of people that were here at the last meeting, there definitely is a demand, and if we can have an additional court, it might be worth those extra months to get it in and get it right, and, you know, and then not worry about the other two courts, we'd still have them, so it seems like a good compromise.
Right, so this is just direction by consensus, so it sounds like there's three saying option two.
All right then, let's move on to item three, informational report related to Memorial Drive pedestrian crosswalk. Can we get a staff report, William?
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council, William Vipel, Works Director. I do have a short presentation, and this is the item that was discussed a few meetings ago about adding a crosswalk to Memorial Drive. So we've had some, the, some engineers come up with some ideas for us. Here we go. So we have three alternatives for you, for you here tonight that we came up with. The first alternative, alternative number one, aptly named, is what is called a road diet, which is, currently Memorial Drive is two lanes in each direction with no center divide, except at the very, very end near Sunny Slope. The rest of it, all the way down to, I forget the name, I haven't been here very long, I can't remember all the names of the streets. To the other end, it's two lanes each direction. So the first option would enhance the crosswalks at Sunny Slope, add bike lanes, narrow it down to one lane each direction, provide bike lanes on both sides, and a buffer between the traffic lane and the bike lanes. There would be rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalk. This would be a new crosswalk at Verdun, crossing from the school over to the, to the other corner. There would be rectangular flashing beacons there. This continues down, this would be a crosswalk in the, in mid-block, going from the skate park across over to the other park on the other side of the street. The bike lanes, the one lane, and then left turn lanes would be installed. And with the left turn lane in the middle, there would be a refuge point for anybody who crossed here, so if you only made it halfway across, and there was too much traffic, you only had to go across one lane of traffic, and you could wait in the middle if you needed to. And this, this continues, oh, I'm sorry. It does continue all the way down to the next intersection, so that, that would, that could potentially impact traffic, because we go from two lanes each direction down to one lane each direction. The second alternative is the mid, just the mid-block crosswalk with the HAWK system, but there's no refuge, there's no refuge island in the middle. The HAWK system is flash, flashes red, so the vehicles need to stop whether there's anybody in the crosswalk or not. And the alternative two is just that. And then, alternative number three would be the HAWK system, but the crosswalk would be installed at Verdun, across to Sunny Slope Elementary School, and that, and then they would upgrade the crosswalk across Verdun also. So the stop line, if you were heading north on Memorial, you can see the little black line would be a stop line prior to that actual intersection, so the cars would have to stop behind that line, and then going south, they would have to stop on the other line on the other side. So that would, that would be a buffer for the pedestrians to be able to cross. There's currently not a median strip there, but there's a space to put that refuge island in there, because it's, it's where the lanes go from having a left turn lane, so there's basically five lanes of traffic there, down to four, so you can see how it narrows down, that the median narrows down there, so we could put in that refuge island there. And this is the recommendation of staff, is to include this crosswalk.
So William, if I could just jump in really quick. So that system, if you've driven in the last few years through Los Banos on Pacheco Pass Highway, right by the Sinclair Gas Station, they've actually got, you know, one of these where you press the button, and it gives you a red light, so it's safe, and actually stops traffic. And with the concerns of a mid-block crosswalk, this adds a layer of security.
So that, that one doesn't exist anymore, but there was one there, they actually put a stoplight in there now. It's been a while since he went over there.
Yeah, it stopped commuting over there.
Which is a good thing, I think, for Hollister. But the reasons against alternative number two, the mid-block crosswalk, is when you're at a corner, people are paying attention to that side street, and especially if it's a cross all the way across, this is just a three-legged intersection, but people are paying attention because cars are turning right in front of them, or they're turning left across in front of them, or, so people generally pay more attention at corners. Oops. When you go to the mid-block, people generally aren't paying attention to cross traffic, because they're focused on going straight, because there's no intersecting streets. So it makes it a little bit more dangerous for the pedestrians to cross at a mid-block crosswalk. And mid-block crosswalks are generally not recommended, if at all possible, just because we're directing them. Now, I understand that there's people crossing here currently, and we want to make it safe for them, but we're not directing them to cross there. If we direct them to cross there, and then somebody gets hit, then now we could be liable, because we've told them, this is a safe place for you to cross.
William, if I may just add, our insurance company would second that, as we've worked with them as well.
So this, so alternative number three provides a safe place for them to cross. It's at an intersection, although it's a, it's an uncontrolled intersection going north and south, but with the HAWK system, it would be controlled when there's a pedestrian. And when the light's flashing red, or when it's red, cars are required to stop whether there's anybody in the crosswalk or not. So let's get down to the bottom line. So alternative number one is the most expensive, because it requires a lot more restriping and a lot more construction. Alternative number two is $584,000, and the most, most of that expense is in that, that HAWK system. It's light poles, and it's flashing lights, it's electrical work, it's all of that. And alternative number three is a little bit cheaper than an alternative number two, but it still comes in at over half a million dollars. So again, staff's recommendation is alternative number three, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Resendez, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. So I think I have the answer to this, but I'm going to ask you anyway. It seems like alternative number three is going to be the most quickest turnaround that we're looking at?
Well, it could, alternative number three, alternative number two, they're requiring some of the same infrastructure, it's just different locations. That, either one of those would be the quickest turnaround, and alternative number one is like a major project.
Okay, and then the, my other question would be, what kind of community input did we get from the neighbors, and the school, and all stakeholders?
We haven't done any of that, this was just bringing options to council to, to get some direction.
Okay. Are we, is there a requirement for us to do that? Are we planning on doing it, or there's no requirement, depending on what option we go with, I would imagine?
Yeah, there's no requirement, no legal requirement to do it, but it's an option.
Yeah, and when, when we went over this item before, we were asked to bring this back in an expedited fashion, so.
Councilmember Burns, questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, I truly appreciate it. This is one of my high priorities, because we don't want to see anybody become a casualty that maybe we could prevent. And so, like Councilmember Resendez brought up, did we do a traffic study or a survey or anything? Because, now, I have to say, I've lived in that area, that general area, for well over 20 years. I don't think I've ever really seen the need for two lanes each direction there. It may have been thoughtful planning when it was done, but it, it really seems like a one lane each direction would be more than adequate, the entire length of that road, to where it T-intersects, and it actually pars down as you go further south. Having said that, I do think it would be important to talk with the administration at the school or the school district, because I can tell you, coming down Sunny Slope at 2:00, 2:30 in the afternoon, it's a bit crazy. It is two lanes in those areas, and there's a parking lane with red curb and green curb, and I do suspect when it's drop off and pickup time, it gets a little crazy around there, and I purposely go different directions to stay away. And I know that occasionally I see our. And I know that occasionally I see our motors, they're actively enforcing the law, which I appreciate as well. But what I don't want to do is find us in a scenario like Lad Lane, where we've underreacted or overreacted. And I do think that community outreach is an important part of this. You know, maybe check with the school PD, I don't even know, they still have this thing called Parent Teachers Associations, PTAs, to get the flavor of Sunny Slope Elementary. One or both of my kids went there, and my sense is it's only getting bigger, and it's not gonna go away. And I assume that kids that are coming up off of the Santana Ranch are probably in elementary, or heading to that school, or maybe Sierra Vista. And we've had engineering challenges with Sierra Vista as well. And so, we know that there's more build-out coming in the award homes that are going up off of Fairview, and I don't know where, which elementary those kids are gonna head to. But I'd really like to see a permanent solution to a permanent problem if we take no action. And so, for me, it's got absolutely nothing to do with money, it's got everything to do with doing the right thing the first time. And if it takes a little bit longer, I have an appetite for that, because I'm looking for a permanent resolution on this. And so, my natural inclination would be number one. But again, if we can do and get equal results with less cost and quicker, I could support that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
I think there was a traffic study done for option number two? Two traffic studies, yeah.
As you may remember, we did have a larger project for this area back maybe just 10 months ago, that there were studies done for that one as well, and then that one, you know, didn't go anywhere. And that was reducing it, and kind of having the lane diets and the meandering lanes.
The chicanes.
Chicanes and all of that.
So I think that's where this alternative number one came from, is from that traffic study, right?
Yes.
Questions, Councilmember Perez, Councilmember Morales? Why don't we go to public comment, if there's any?
Yes, our first speaker is Michael Castro, to be followed by Clinton.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for your time and consideration on this matter. This is very important, because it's about our kids' safety. Every morning you see your parents darting across the street with their children. Kids have gotten seriously injured at the spot. We're reminded, because every day I walk my daughter to class, she asks about the roadside memorial, and asks me to explain what that is about. You know, parents walking their kids to school really is that hometown feeling that we love. And we really want to, you know, preserve that, because it's extremely important. I know something much more expansive was proposed back in March, but now we're asking really just for the bare minimum for this crosswalk. It's really just so our kids could walk across one Hollister's busiest street safely, and that's the whole idea behind it. I've reached out to several of you in the past, had some great conversations, and kind of address if there's any community input. Yes, you know, I live in that area, all the neighbors, all of us have talked, we've spoken with David in the past, about how important and how quickly this needs to be done. Because again, it's really not a matter of if a child's gonna get hurt, it's when it's gonna happen again. And there's proof of there on the side of the street that we all have to look at every day. So just really thank you so much for, you know, listening to this and considering it. So please just really trust your community, trust us to let you know where the danger's at, because we see it, we know it's there, and we, you know, we live there. So just thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Clinton, to be followed by Joe Rivas.
Good evening, my name is Clinton, thank you. I am also a father and concerned citizen for that area. And what you said, though, was, I think, correct. I do, Michael's my neighbor, we both walk our kids. I think that having it done quickly is definitely on our agenda. But I'm not talking just for my kids that I walk now, I'm looking at the kids in 10 years from now. So when you say, "Let's get it done right," I'm okay with that also, but I would like to get something done also quicker. It's like, it's very dangerous, I mean dangerous, to walk on that street. And there's a quarter to a half mile of Memorial Drive to walk. No parent has that time in the morning to drop off their kid, to walk a quarter-mile this way or quarter-mile this way. There's two parks, there's a picnic area, there's horseshoe pits, there's the skate park. There's, it's a kid magnet. How do we not have something in safety for those kids there? Already, I've been here for seven years. You know, and I can't believe there's nothing there already. You know, so I'm just here and stressing how important it is. And I spoke to David, I've emailed, I don't do this city council stuff. I'm just a guy, you know, I'm just a guy who just works and makes a living and goes to work every day. You know, this is my first-ever meeting like this. But that's how important it is to me. And I would feel terrible if I didn't do my part as a citizen in Hollister to come in here and look at you guys direct in your face and say, "Listen, this needs to be done quickly, yes. Let's do the grand project quickly, I don't care what it takes." I'm not the guy, I don't know all the red tape and all that stuff that goes with it, but I don't care about that stuff either. I just want a crosswalk, so I can walk my kids to school safely. Thank you.
Thank you. The next public speaker is Joe Rivas.
Greetings, Council. Alright, so this morning I found out about this meeting. I've been asking for this crosswalk, I'm the principal of Sunny Slope School, I apologize, Joe Rivas, for eight years. So thank you for taking the time and the attention to this. I will agree with the other speakers, it's a very dangerous intersection. There's approximately 650 students, age four to 14, that go to Sunny Slope School, about 100 walkers from this direction, and about 300 or so cars that I have affectionately nicknamed Memorial Speedway. If you've ever been there, when those lights turn green, we're talking 40, 50, 60 miles an hour. It's about as unsafe as you could possibly imagine. As the previous speaker talked about, the Tremor Soccer Field, Vets Park, our school, the park that's also there, there is a lot of people there, and yeah, they jaywalk. I would be lying to you if I told you I've never crossed illegally as well. I apologize, and yeah, thank you for not even looking up. I have done it at times, because it is almost a half a mile from the four-way stop to the light. And we're not gonna go all the way back to cross to cross, it's just not what we do. So, in terms of the million-dollar one, sure, that would be nice, but really, in my personal opinion, the sooner the better, because anything there is better what is there now, which is nothing. It's extremely unsafe, I fear for all of my students, all of my parents, and it just really is not safe. So, option one in a million would be great, but really, option three, that's right there. It's pretty much from what I could see, right where our parking lot is. But anything, anything, anything is better than what it is now. So, thank you very much, thank you for bringing this up, thank you for doing this, I appreciate it, sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
And those are the public comments for this item.
Alright, let's bring it back for discussion then. Councilmember Resendez, do you have any further thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, William, for the presentation. Thank you to the parents that came out here, and thank you to the principal that came as well. So I'm an educator, and when I'm in a classroom, my number-one priority is the safety of the kids that are entrusted to me by their parents. I'm also probably the most fiscally conservative council member up here. It's true, you said it at the last meeting. But when it comes to the kids' safety, we, this is, we're not just looking at a crosswalk, we're talking bikes, we're talking about narrowing the road, making sure it's just one way, one lane, sorry, I'm getting tongue-tied here, both ways. I agree with Councilmember Burns, there's no reason or rationale that we should have it both, two lanes up. I've been down there, and I agree with all the speakers, I agree with my colleague to the right of me. I am concerned about the time constraint, but I, at the same time, I'm also concerned about, you know, bureaucracy and reaching out to the public and ensuring that we cross all our Ts and dot our Is, but I think we should do it right, and I'm 100% in favor of option one. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Resendez, I appreciate your comments. So, I too lean towards one, but I've also heard the principal and the members in the community that came up. I'm sure that if more outreach were done, this room would be filled beyond. If we got 650 students, last time I checked, that's about 1,300 parents, aunts, uncles, cousins, nephews, nieces, on and on. We could pack this place with us. And so, what I'm wondering is, I still lean towards one, but I've heard what has been said, we need to do something soon. Because what I haven't heard in the presentation is if we opt for A or one, how long is that gonna take versus two or three? I mean, when I took my notes, I put one or three. And frankly, I'm wondering if we can't do one and three, and do three first, if one's gonna take 18 months to get done, let's do something as soon as humanly possible, weather permitting. And then I would also ask that, I've heard the principal, he watches it every day, I'm sure he prays every day, and maybe we need to get enhanced law enforcement presence out there. I know I've driven down Sunny Slope, and I go extra slow, because I see the little motorcycle officers sitting down there. So I know they're working it, but maybe we need to have more intense enforcement in that area as well. And so, I don't know what the answer is, Council, you know, but three feels like it would be quicker, but one feels like it'd be more long-range, because this school is only gonna continue with that student counter more, I anticipate, just based on the growth on East Hollister that I'm appointed to represent. And so, those are my thoughts, Council.
Councilmember Perez?
I like alternative number three. It fits, it's right there with the parking lot, it's at a corner. We just heard from staff about the midway crossing, how that's not very good. And as far as option number one with the bike lanes and stuff, I think that's, right now, the concern is the safety of these children getting to and from, across that Memorial Drive. I think option number three is the best way to go for now. And if we need to bring it back to bring bike lanes in, then we need to bring it back.
Councilmember Morales?
No, so thank you for those of you that came to speak, we really heard you. So I'm leaning towards number three, just to make sure we have something immediately. I would, however, like to see if we can have like a listening session. I don't know if the school's willing to host, kind of go to our community to hear and potentially present. If there were two traffic, I don't know, traffic studies that were done, maybe we need to just revisit that and get more community input, so that we can do it right, but at least have an immediate solution for, you know, the families that are dealing with this every day. And to make sure that it's actually agendized and we can bring it back. But after hearing the community, and providing kind of like the outcomes, or what our engineering department has found, so that we can make sure, what I don't want to happen is another Lad Lane situation. So that's just my concern, to make sure that we, if we're gonna do it, let's go to the community, have it there, look at what we've already done, and bring it back, but have an immediate solution. So option number three would be my vote for now.
Yeah, I'm feeling similar. I have to confess that when I heard road diet, I got heartburn, sorry. Lad Lane was kind of a mess for us. And so I absolutely would not want to do option one unless we had major input from the community and from the school. But option three would give us that safety that we need immediately. So I think pursuing that, and then if we want to have a listening session future, look at bike lanes or other things, and get a lot of community input, and take our time with that and get it right, I'd be okay with that. But option three would be the quick solution for safety purposes, so.
So, just for a little clarification. So, option number one, for any of these options, probably the timeline is gonna be controlled by getting those Hawk systems, the poles, the systems, the electrical. The rest of like option number one is mostly like it would be a slurry cylinder striping, and then some small islands and things like that. So probably whichever option we choose, if we choose the Hawk system, I don't know how readily available those are, but I know just a regular streetlight pole takes at least 10 weeks to get. And that was 10 months during COVID, so I don't know how they've recovered from that 10 months or not. So I don't know how readily available those are, but that's probably gonna be what controls our timeline, is the availability of that equipment, and then dealing with PG&E to get that hooked up and things like that.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you. So, did I just hear you say that the timeline could be, my interpretation could be equal for any one of the three, and it's all dependent on how soon we can get the equipment?
Yes.
And do you have a timeframe of no sooner than ballpark? I heard you reference 10 weeks, and that's just to get the stuff?
That's like, best-case scenario, I would say 10 weeks. I have really no idea how long it would take to get those systems. But I would say probably, it would probably take a year to get option number one done, because it would have to all be designed, we have to go out to bid. We'd have to go out to bid for any of these, because they're well above the limits of KUPCA. But I would say, within a year is possible.
Within a year, I just have to say, that doesn't work for me. No way, no form, no way. What's a short-term solution to this existing problem that is a life safety factor involved? We can't just randomly position our police officers out there every morning, I don't think that's realistic. What temporary solutions can we use to slow traffic? Even, heaven forbid I say it, but speed bumps. To slow them down, to give these kids a fighting chance to get across the road. I mean, we do have that memorial out there, I walk that route for exercise frequently. And so, I'm all too aware of what happened that led to that accident that was tragic. And so, we have a reminder, and a year, in my mind. And I know you have other priorities, and you have other things that we're hounding you for. But, you know, I'm the guy that's always, "Let's paint the walls, let's paint the walls, let's paint the walls." But let's protect the kids first. And so, I don't know how we, I don't know, City Manager, I don't know what we do here, Chief of Police, but this can't take a year, in my opinion. And if it does, shame on me.
Councilmember Morales, did you have an additional?
My own, my comment was, if you do have trouble with PG&E, please let us know. We have ways of, we can help with that, that's all I can say.
So, did you, Chief, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to add, I concur with all the points that William brought up. It will take a year for that option one, because it's out of our control, out of William's control of how long it will take. I know it is a dangerous area. There are areas to cross right now, and it's correct, even the principal acknowledged people are jaywalking and doing that. But I think that the quicker options are the other options that were provided. But at this point, it is something where even a crosswalk doesn't make it more, it makes it a little bit more safe, but if these kids are still gonna be crossing, you could put the crosswalk there, and if they're not using the crosswalk, it's still gonna be a dangerous situation. So it all comes down to how much time it's gonna have to take. If you want something quicker, then I would recommend the other options. But I am familiar with the stoplight option that he provided. That is way better than just the flashing light, it's actually a red light, and traffic has to stop there. But that's gonna take a long time. It would be a better solution, but it's a longer solution. So that's something the Council's gonna have to decide.
Yes, Councilmember Morales?
William, how long was option number three? Was that a year as well?
Well, I didn't get any construction estimates on time, we just have a cost proposal. And alls I'm saying is probably, what's likely, the restrictor on it is the availability of those parts. Now, they may be readily available, and we could order them tomorrow, but the project still has to be designed, and then we have to put together bid documents, we have to go out to bid, we have to award the contract, and then the contractor has to come and do the work.
And I have our city attorney looking at your, what's within your authority to waive some of your own internal procurement? This would be subject to the project labor agreements that you just authorized? So, the per- So the purchasing policies that you recently passed it took effect January 4th would apply to any of these options.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Member Burson.
Thank you. So I thought that the chief made some good points and hear from the speakers as well. In order to change what's happening there, you can't just put a crosswalk there. You have to physically change the way that people are driving and the way that the kids are using the streets. Yeah, put speed humps. If we're not going to do the restriping, we're not going to put a median, we're not going to do the crosswalk, then you have to put something there that's going to actually stop them from jamming down that road every single day. That's why you need to do the median. That's why you need to narrow the road, call it a diet, call it whatever you want, to one way, both ways. That's why you have to have a safe place for kids to ride their bikes. Kids are going to ride their bikes there, whether it's two lane, whether it's speed humps, whether there's a bike lane or not. You have to change that road drastically. You have to change the behavior of the people driving that road and you have to change the behavior of the kids walking it. Because you could slap a beautiful little crosswalk there, but if little Timmy is used to going this way and eagerly crossing and we've got these people jamming every single day, you're not really going to prevent anything. So there has to be something drastic. I'm all for the speed humps because that'll stop them, or we go with option one.
Quick question on the speed humps. My understanding was if you have four lane road, speed humps don't work. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
Well, the issue happens because the way the speed humps are designed with the center speed cushion being placed in the center so that fire trucks can straddle that center one. We could still have a center one for them to straddle, but it would be in the center of four lanes instead of in the center of two lanes.
Could you weigh in maybe? Because I seem to recall there being something about the rules and not putting speed humps on beyond a two lane road. I just, I'm curious about that as far as the traffic.
So our policy does limit it to streets twenty-five miles per hour or under. But this is in front of a school and it is council's policy. So I think the traffic study has been done, but I'm not sure if the traffic study was for speed cushions. It was just a general traffic study.
So there's not a rule about that? I just, I seem to remember that for some reason, maybe I'm just hallucinating.
You know, you run into the situation where when children are present, you do have a twenty-five mile an hour regardless of the number of lanes. We could look at that, we could look at it from a study perspective. As for just painting a crosswalk there, you won't get staff to give you that recommendation. It'd be a major insurance concern as well as, I don't think you would get any of us in the field to make that recommendation because that would possibly invite a dangerous situation.
Because it's like Verdun is an uncontrolled intersection on the north-south and mid-block, definitely not just painting a crosswalk. So yeah, that's why we would recommend not just, painting a crosswalk we could do tomorrow, but the position of where it's at, we wouldn't recommend that.
From a risk standpoint and insurance standpoint, just looking at it fiscally, we would not recommend it. And I think just from a staff direction of us making a recommendation that could possibly lead to a tragic event, I don't think from a, you know, just from a personal standpoint, you're not going to get anybody, the engineering staff or city manager's department to say to go there.
Counselor Member Burns.
Thank you, mayor. So again, I'm not saying speed humps are the be-all, end-all solution, but it might be a temporary solution to a permanent problem that's going to take greater community engagement. We've already heard from the school. The school seems pretty good with three. And even if we move on three, and I've heard you say at least ten weeks. My recollection is we could have speed humps out there next week if we made that decision. And that would be a temporary solution and I'm willing to take the heat. I don't care. I'd rather have them screaming at me because they have to slow down than have to deal with a victim of a traffic collision that would be preventable by the speed humps. Frankly, I would like to see a more permanent solution. And frankly, I don't know because it's been a while now since you presented one versus three, but I don't know that three isn't part of one anyway. And so, you know, this feels to me like if we do the speed humps, we're buying ourselves time or maybe buying somebody a personal injury, preventing a personal injury or death. And we can then, we don't have to rush to judgment. And once we, it's clear that this council wants to take some action. And so even with that, like you said, maybe you call tomorrow and they go, oh no, we've got plenty of this and plenty of that. But there's still other work that has to happen before the physical work can take place. And as I recall, doesn't, speed humps don't really require much. And it has been the council's past practice to put them down in the areas of schools and parks. Well, Memorial Drive has got all of that and beyond. And, you know, I think it buys us time is really what I think I'm trying to do here to then do it correctly the first time. Because lad lane was a nightmare and it was not intended to be. It just became because frankly, I think we tried to cheap out. I certainly did and I regret that, but first time, shame on me. But nobody got hurt in the deal. Some of our pride got hurt a little bit, like mine. But I think that's a temporary solution and I'll be quiet now. Thank you, mayor.
Counselor Member Morales.
So I'd like to hear, hearing the urgency that we're looking for something that's efficient, not necessarily cost-effective, but in terms of just making sure that's something that's going to be safe gets done. Have we considered a, this might be dumb, so I'm sorry, an actual body to do the crosswalking, like the schools, just to walk them back and forth? Or is it just going to be too much of a headache for that?
I'm not sure if the school provides a crossing guard, but that would be at the actual intersection, so I'm not sure legally if we could, you know, it'd be almost like a traffic stop, right, chief? If someone was out there stopping traffic in the middle of the road? Because it's the difference of down the road from the existing crosswalk. So I'm not sure whoever would sanction that may end up in a very liable state.
There would need to be an actual crosswalk there for a crosswalk person to be out there stopping traffic.
And if you put a crosswalk there and then when the crossing guard's not there, then you're directing them to cross.
And that's how they used to have it at the high school before they put the gates in. They had, you know, during school hours, they actually had the person with the stop sign and then, you know, during the early hours or the afternoon hours, there would not be someone there. I can remember someone getting hit before the crossing guard was there at the high school some odd years ago, so.
So it sounds like possibly speed humps might be a solution temporarily until we can get that option three in. And we could still even look at option one as a further down the road, you know, like complete solution. So I know that y'all were looking at different speed humps than those pointy things that kill people when they go over them. Did you have any other alternatives as far as putting the rubber speed humps down?
Well, we can install rubber, but speed tables instead of speed cushions, which is what we install now, is they're considered speed cushions. But we could put speed tables, but they would still need to be in cushion type so that the fire trucks could still straddle them. And the only difference between them is speed tables allow you to go over them faster because it's not up and down. You go up and it's flat and then you go down. So we might be defeating the purpose by putting speed tables there if we want to slow people down to twenty-five and we put in speed tables that they could potentially go thirty-five over. We may be installing something that doesn't really get us where we want to be.
I just know I've gotten a lot of feedback from people who say I have to go five miles an hour over those little pyramids. So, and I know we were looking at just different shaped ones, not necessarily the cushions that you're talking about, but just something with a slightly different shape. Because I've gone over other ones that don't really have that jarring, kill-your-suspension kind of thing that we have been using. So that's my only point. But I like the tiered approach, so we can do something right away, at least start with the safety and then get that option three in and then do a lot of feedback before we employ and spend a million dollars on option one, so.
So chief, I don't know if you can weigh in. My understanding is that any auto ped collision that is twenty-eight miles or greater in speed on impact usually will result in a fatality. And that's the stat I'm aware of and it's probably outdated by now. But I don't know if you have any thoughts on that. Because again, I don't want to damage cars, but if I have to choose between damaging the undercarriage on the car and a fourth grader, I'll choose the car every time, so.
I think you're correct on that statistics. Anything, every speed higher you go up, it increases the likelihood of serious injury or death. But I also agree with William's point that the speed tables versus the speed humps are a solution, even if you get the traffic to stay at twenty-five miles an hour. The problem is not the cars going twenty-five miles an hour. The problems are the cars that are going forty, forty-five miles an hour. They can't stop even if a kid pops out in front of them, jaywalks or the principal walks out or jaywalking. They can't stop at that speed. At twenty-five miles, they can stop and technology today with cars, when analog brakes, if you can keep them to twenty-five miles an hour, there's a quicker reaction time. And the speed tables, you wouldn't have as much of a pushback from the community that has to almost come to a complete stop to go over the speed humps versus the speed tables that if they're going twenty-five miles an hour, they can continue going twenty-five miles an hour. If they hit it at thirty-five, they're going to feel that. And that's why the difference in those two different types of designs for reducing the speed, so.
Perfect, thank you, chief. I appreciate your input. Thank you, mayor.
Did you have something, Counselor Member Perez?
So there's different types of speed tables also because we have them in front of the high school. We have them on Vine Street. And then we have them over there. Those are speed humps that are on, I can't think of the name of the street. Not central. Last street going up before El Camino de Vida. Clear, is it clear view on the left? There's also speed tables there. I think that speed tables are so much better, but isn't there a type of temporary rubber speeds, something besides this peak that we have that we could buy and insert?
Yeah, the speed tables would be different in the fact that you go up and then it's a flat on top and then it goes down. So, and they make those out of rubber. So it's basically what we have now, but they have that flat portion, the same manufacturer manufactures them. It's recycled rubber, same installation basically, just with the flat portion on top.
So, and we don't know what type of delivery time that would be either, right? Because I mean, even the ten weeks you were talking about before was before. It's not applying necessarily to today. They might have it in stock, you said, the HOCS.
Yeah, well, and the speed tables generally, my experience with the speed cushions, it's a six-week lead time. For the speed cushions, I've never ordered any speed tables, but generally the speed cushions are six weeks, so I would assume the speed tables would be about the same. Now, we have plenty of speed cushions in stock. We've got thousands upon thousands upon thousands of those. That, if that's the direction that council wants to go, that can be installed rather quickly with weather permitting. Just a couple of nice days of weather, we can get that done.
Couple.
Counselor Member Burns.
Might be a while for a couple of nice nights in a row. Thank you, mayor. So again, if we said speed humps? Cushions, humps. Cushions, humps, yeah. We have a lot of those, right? Lots. Yeah, and so, a couple of days to install them. And even if we wanted to go with tables, we order them and we replace them when they come in and we still have solved the problem for the six weeks or ten weeks or three months or whatever it takes to move forward. Because again, my sense is more of an urgency thing. Every day we, no pun intended, but we table this, the risk just continues to go. And so I'm about reducing the risk as soon as possible. And maybe, yeah, there's more costs in labor to put down what we have, put it up and put down what we get. But I think at the end of the day, again, I'll take the heat. I don't mind as long as we don't have to deal with something far more drastic in my mind. Just my sense, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Member Burson. I agree. As much as I'd like to have better speed cushions, I mean, if you went and looked out there and it's going to be six weeks, put the other ones in. We need to do something now to protect the kids. And hopefully you'll look and they'll be ready tomorrow. We can just get those good ones. But you know, I'm fine with the other. I just, we got to do something and that would be a good start, but then work towards that option three. I mean, that would be my judders, so.
So it sounds like, just to want to make sure, we have a consensus to install quickly, order the other model, replace when those get in. And William, I want to make sure we're clear at the length and, you know, is this just in front of the school? How far down are we going with these? Last thing I would want to have happen is we install them just in front of the school and then it should have been in front of the skate park. So I think that that should be addressed as well if we're going to go that direction because I'd hate to have, you know, the staff have to go out and do the work multiple times.
Thoughts, council member?
Thank you. I say all the way down to, from Sunny Slope to Hillcrest. Because you've got the Little League fields, you've got the park, I think actually County Park on the other side, and then you've got our skate park. And as I recall, the young man that got hit that is the memorial, he was actually leaving the skate park. And so, I think that from the four-way stop sign to the traffic light, as it works with the engineering, because I understand there's also a certain distance that has to be between.
Correct.
And so I think if we're going to go, let's go big and let's see, you know, let's see what the outcome is. I mean, I think we're just better protected. I mean, let's protect all the kids to the best of our ability. I've actually heard what the chief has said, that, you know, people, we have to change the behavior as well. But I think that's a good starting point and maybe we find out when the, as we move forward to do the final fix on this, that maybe we need more or less. But I think I would support going from Hillcrest to Sunny Slope. Thank you, thank you, mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Member Burson.
Thank you. Do we know if there's been any accidents reported with the speed humps that we have in place now? No?
No.
Do we know if there's been any with the speed tables? Has there been any accidents reported by the high school?
There was an accident, the high school, soon after they were installed, but it involved a person driving an extremely fast speed. They crashed, lost control. It had more to do with the reckless driving than the speed table.
Yeah, so with the speed tables, my concern is they're kind of like a launching pad. I live by the high school. I think the car ended up either in the house or close to the front yard. So I like the idea of the speed humps. We have them in stock. I'd rather have people slow down to five miles an hour than to maintain it at twenty-five, hit it, go up in the air and possibly hurt somebody. So my suggestion would be speed humps all the way up and down from Hillcrest to Sunny Slope and then option one. And when we do option one, then we can take out the speed humps at that time. That would be my suggestion.
I just want to point out, the memorial is an arterial route and it's soon to be connecting all the way to Santa Ana. And there's going to be a lot of people, a lot of commuters that are leaving every day. They're leaving at four, six in the morning when there's no kids and you're going to be affecting a lot of traffic twenty-four-seven with speed humps that they will have to constantly stop and then proceed. The complaints from other places in the city. And that's where our recommendation would be the speed table if you are going to put something out there. It keeps them at twenty-five or whatever the speed limit is.
And we, and just for the record, I wanted to check in with our interim fire chief. So if they are the rubber material, then that will work with fire as well. It's the paved speed tables where they don't flatten out creates a bit of an issue.
So my understanding is that there was the majority for option number three, depending on what's available, then if it was going to be weeks, then we were going to get the speed tables or the bumps depending on product availability. So that's what I've heard. Now I'm hearing different options. And I also heard that council also agreed that we need to look for a long-term solution, but the priority was also reaching out to the community to get public input so that we don't have the situation we were in with lad lane. So that's what I understood it to be. I know that now we're hearing different things, but I just want to, so that we are focused in terms of the direction and if we're then, so that we stay on point. and if we're, then, so that we're, we stay on point, yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. What does bikeable, walkable, complete streets, that's what they're called, right, the complete streets, what does that do to the value of the homes, what does it do to the neighbor, surrounding neighborhoods? Does it have any kind of impact on them, does anybody here know that?
I don't know, off the top of my head, no, and basically, the option number one is, is basically a complete streets.
Yeah, it's a complete street, and that's how their buildings, that's the bar that is set by cities everywhere, right? The complete street program, and that's what we have, and options two and option three are not the complete street program?
They're not.
They're not, okay, so, I don't know if we're going in different directions, but I'm elected to state my piece, and I wanna go on record and make sure that it's very clear about what position I'm taking, so that would be my position, thank you so much.
Quick question for you, William, though, the, the option three that you're talking about is actually a piece of, of option one, was it not?
So, there is a little difference, but, um, in, in option one, instead of the Hawk system that turns red, they're rectangular, rapid flashing beacons, so they're a little bit different and they flash yellow, instead of flashing red. Now, we could incorporate the Hawk system in, but then the, the cost goes from one-point-three to two million dollars, if we, if we use, ma- maybe not quite that much, because the rapid flashing beacons are, you know, there is a cost to those, but it.
And those beacons, are they ground level or are they?
No, they're, they're the kind, um, that are mounted on the signs, and then they have a button that you can push and then it, it flashes yellow.
Think of like right over here by Fourth Street, by the courthouse over here.
It's not like the ones at Lad Lane that don't work, that you push a button and it.
Madam Mayor.
That has a solar or something, I, that doesn't seem to work, is this different than that?
I'm not sure if those are rapid flashing beacons on Sunny Slope.
It has a, it has a sign that flashes.
On Lad Lane. Yeah.
Yeah, one other difference if I can, Madam Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you, um, just like the, what we did on Central Avenue behind, um, Calaveras, there's gonna be bulb outs, there's not bulb outs with the option three, a bulb out essentially shortens the path that the kids have to cross the street, which makes it safer for them as well, um, that's something that's on here, that's not on option three.
Councilmember Perez?
Uh, thank you Mayor, so, with option two, are, are we talking the same thing that's directly across from Gold's Gym and San Benito Tire, where you hit the button, the sidewalk lights up with flashing yellow, and the sign flashes as well?
This is a big arm, like a traffic signal that goes over on both sides.
Okay.
And then it flashes red, when they push the button, it flashes red, it turns red, and then cars have to stop whether there's someone in there or not.
Gotcha, okay, and, and so, just so I'm clear, um, my understanding is we're gonna do a speed table or a speed cushion, a speed something to slow them down, step A, step B, we're gonna do our community outreach to the surrounding community and the school community and see what they recommend, because it's their kids, their neighborhood, and then we'll consider that, and then we'll come back for, for a cleanup on this thing, once we've done the community outreach, but we've still solved a permanent problem with a temporary solution until we can get to that point, and, um, I also wanted to comment that I understand that we're gonna, we're gonna extend Memorial, I think it might even be in the process right now, but the reality is anybody going down Memorial could just as easily turn left on Sunny Slope or Hillcrest and just go up to twenty-five, and they're out. Well, well, they're really not out, they're just stuck in traffic, we know that, but, um, but to the, to the Councilmember Morales's point, yeah, I, I'm looking for a temporary solution, and then I wanna do the community outreach, and then we'll figure out are we gonna spend half a million dollars, we're gonna spend a million-two, or we're gonna spend two million, because the good news is, once we do this right the first time, we should never have to do it ever again, and it's never gonna get any cheaper to do it than today, and so, let's do it right this time, but let's solve the problem temporarily with the speed bulbs, or not the speed bulbs, the speed cushions or speed humps, the speed whatevers, to, uh, to get this thing started and show the commitment to that community and their children. Thank you Mayor.
Okay, so it sounds like we shifted a little, so we're not gonna go from the speed humps and then try to get option three in quickly, we're gonna wait and try to decide, I mean, was the.
I'm not writing down the score, I think the city manager.
A little shifting going on here.
Maybe, maybe if we could just take a step back, so what I'm hearing is just kinda the premise.
This is all confusing now, it's like.
Yeah, let me, I'll just reboot, so the premise was, let's get something going extremely fast, okay? Regardless of what option we pick, there's the whole bidding process, we've got a PLA process, we've, we're making an assumption that the red lights are gonna come in ten weeks, it could be longer, I think, just, yeah, well, and, and what's tough is, is everything now, you know, with supply chains is, is a variable, right? And so then we heard, let's do it really quick, but we wanna use speed tables, those are something we've gotta order, we have an assumption of six weeks, so while that is being ordered and worked on, we have existing speed cushions, which are the ones that are around town now, what I'm hearing was, basically, put those in, those can go in relatively quickly, then when the other ones come in on order, pull those out, drop in the new ones, and then the question was, if we do that, that's the temporary solution, we've heard some of take it, you know, from the whole strip, you know, from Sunny Slope to Hillcrest, so that was the piece that was out there, and then, instead of picking one, two, or three, go out into the community and get some feedback on probably option one and get some input there, because that's more of the complete streets, but pitch the options to the community.
That's why you're city manager.
And I would suggest, Madam Mayor, if we could just go down real quick, real quick each council member and see what their option would be, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, I like what Councilmember Perez said, speed cushions for now, up from Hillcrest to Sunny Slope, get community out, input, and then bring back these options, and then we'll decide then.
And get the tables and swap the cushions with the tables?
No, 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 no tables, no tables.
Yeah, the tables have the cutouts for the fire engine, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's not my choice, yeah.
Okay, so, but that's a difference, so.
Councilmember Perez?
Feels like I've been talking all night, apparently I have, sorry Mayor, so, 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 I agree with everything Councilmember Rosenda said, but I do think that we swap them out, um, when they come in, the, the, the tables for the cushions, and, and I'd suggest we also try and sell all the other cushions we have.
Please, fire sale. Uh, Councilmember Perez, what's your, what's your thinking?
I don't like alternative number two, I don't like the, the mid-block crossing. Option one, it's you still have that mid-block crossing, um, leave it to the, to the community right there, but Verdun, that needs a crosswalk, that needs a crosswalk, that is, that is, that makes so much sense right there. So I, I do like option three, I do like putting the, uh, cushions up that aren't cushions, until the tables come up, and that's where I stand.
Okay, Councilmember Morales?
Thank you Mayor, um, in remembering with Lad Lane, I think it was, according to one of my constituents, it was about five years, I came into City Council, that was, it's been two years, so that was a seven-year wait for engineering and bids and a lot of stuff. Um, so, my recommendation or what I would like to see is option number three to be implemented right away so that we have a solution, put in the speed tables or speed bumps, whatever we have available for an immediate remedy, look at the studies that were done, talk to the community, look at a long-term solution, bring that back for whatever bid process, I don't want the illusion of having something that might take anywhere from two years to five years to actually, you know, come to fruition, I, you know, it sounds like there needs to be a solution right now, so have something that's a viable solution, a temporary solution, and then plan for the long-term solution, whether it's one year or five years, depending on a lot of different factors, whether it's the weather or availability or, or even whatever, um, at least we have a solution that will take care of our community, that is my recommendation.
If, if I could ask for clarity on that, so you had the cushions, did you want to see them get swapped into the tables?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I have this question for both you and Councilmember Perez, if we do the tables, you know, the cushions of the tables, would that also be Hillcrest to Sunny Slope?
Yes. Now, I wanna clarify, Chief, I heard what you said, but I wanna make sure, is that within the parameters of what you said?
The, the putting the, the option three and then the speed tables?
No, from, from, like, from what, from what to what, what would your recommendation be to put the?
That's up to you to decide, I mean.
Well, I'm asking your opinion, so you brought up a really valid point, um, but I wanted to know, like, what would be, what would be your recommendation?
Recommendation would be the, the speed tables versus the speed humps, so that the cars stay at a, at the posted speed limit or slower, a more reasonable speed limit, when they do get to the new section that's being built, that roadway between, um, Hillcrest and Santa Ana is only gonna be two lanes, and there are gonna be narrow for that, for that purpose, to keep cars at a slower pace, so, there's gonna be, um, a slowing down of, of, of traffic for those vehicles wanting to go all the way to Santa Ana to then get, uh, Highway twenty-five or to go to those schools, so I, I think the, the, the solutions that you're coming up with will work, it's just a matter of how much time it's gonna take, the speed tables in conjunction with a crosswalk, a lightheaded crosswalk, I think all those are solutions that would work, it's a good balance between making people stop all the time versus just keeping people at a reasonable speed.
So Hillcrest to, would you go the whole distance?
That's my, yes, that was my question.
Yeah, she's asking Hillcrest to, or Sunny Slope to Hillcrest. Sunny Slope to Hillcrest. The whole thing. For the points that are brought up, Little League games, uh, there's always kids there at the park, and there's people on both sides, there's a park on both sides, people crossing, the skate park is right there, uh, and, um, all, all those apartments that are there, a lot of kids live there as well.
So it sounds like a yes.
Yes. Councilmember Perez?
The, um, if, if we're gonna go speed tables, why not just do the speed table itself?
The timing, I think that's the goal, but they're saying it might take a while to get them shipped, so we could put in what we have, replace it with the speed tables.
I'm talking about using asphalt.
I think there's an issue with fire, is there not, the fire trucks, so, for safety, yeah.
Yeah, that's a major route for our fire department to get across town, to get out of town, and so the, the permanent pavement ones.
So you're telling me that we can only make a pavement this wide, and we can't shorten it so, so that our, our fire trucks can get through, that doesn't make sense to me. If there's a speed table and we're gonna form it out of asphalt like the other permanent places, why don't we do that first, and make it so that the fire trucks can get through?
So if we were to do that first, and William, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be a CIP that we would probably put out to bid, I'm not sure if your crew would be, have the capacity to.
So the plastic is temp- temporary too?
Correct.
I've, I've attempted to install asphalt speed cushions, um, at my prior position, and it's very difficult to get that, to get that, the, all of those slopes right, now, I'm sure there's experts out there that can do it, but then that would require, then it's a construction project.
And, and you know what, if it takes more money to do something permanent instead of these plastic things around, I, I think it's worth it.
It just slows down the process, was my point.
I hear you. Excuse me?
So Councilmember Perez, just for clarity on the, I have you as cushions to tables, option three, and my question is for the cushions to tables, I'm hearing Hillcrest to Sunny Slope from the others, I was just, okay.
And I would agree with that as well, I, I really like the option three, I like that Hawkeye or whatever it's called, it just, you know that's gonna stop them and, and really make it safe, so I wanna make sure we do that. As far as option one, it's not that I'm against it, but I have to be honest, some of the complete streets we've done, we've, as Tim, I guess Councilmember Perez has said, we've cheaped out, and I'm looking at Sally Street and seeing broken rubber curbs, and I'm seeing other things, you know, we want something that's gonna last, and I would like us to explore, you know, doing things a little more slowly, but doing them nicely, with landscaping and asphalt and, uh, concrete as opposed to rubber stuff that breaks, so I, I just wanna take our time with, you know, the billion and two-million-dollar projects and, but I do want that safety, so I'm, I'm all in on option three and doing the, the speed humps and then tables, so.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing is cushions to tables, I've got three at cushions to tables, to option three, Hillcrest to Sunny Slope, with a desire to look at it a more permanent solution, so now I'm gonna really throw a curveball, but I don't wanna have to come back with a follow-up question. When option three is installed, let's fast forward to when option three is installed, there will still be, option three comes up to Verdun, you will still have the run from Verdun to Hillcrest.
Correct.
I'm assuming that we would leave those temporary speed tables in until that work, until whatever the, the ultimate project ends up being, yes.
We'll see how they, they work, but then we can look at a more permanent solution over time, so, but the main thing is the safety and, and getting things in, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
What I'm still not hearing though is the community outreach piece, where does that fall in line with the speed tables, or speed humps, the speed tables to option three, and, and frankly, option three could become part of a greater option one, and so, but I still think we need to do the community outreach piece, because if anything I learned from Lad Lane, that was, that was absent and it absolutely needs to be present, and, and again, whether we invest one-point-two or two-point-one on something one time, once and done correctly is, is really a great outcome in my mind, but I still want it, I think the community needs to contribute to that conversation.
I think we all said that that was part of the, what we, we all said it, the three of us all said it.
If we're looking at speed and safety, if those things, if the Hawkeye thing is available right away, are we gonna wait for community outreach, or do we put it in for safety and then do the community outreach for more permanent solution?
The way I understand it, I'm sorry, the way I understand it is, option three would be pre-community outreach, you put in community outreach, or you put in option three, which is a CIP project, so that'll come back and we'll go through that whole process, then, down the road, simultaneously, whatnot, we're doing a community outreach process for then a second CIP that is a bigger process. So in theory, you could be doing a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project, fast forward a few years, community input, you're doing a million-dollar project, a one-point-five-million-dollar project, that's the way I understand the three positions.
We evaluate.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, I think we're gonna need to do community outreach now, because we're gonna have to inform the community of, this is what the city council's doing, and I'm sure that they're gonna need to know, they're gonna wanna know what's, what's happening, 'cause they're gonna see something, so, community information, whether it's a press release or anything, just for information, and we can, we can actually start the process a little bit earlier than the second, um, bid, just to make sure that there's communication going back and forth, communication transparency and involvement at all points, so, and I'm not sure who would run point on that, whether it's William or somebody in your office, but I think we need to, we need to let the community know what we're doing right now with this issue, and then what's gonna happen in the future.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could certainly put something together, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, that it's option three outreach, I mean, the outreach can be before option three, but the intention is, we're gonna do outreach, hey, we're doing option three as the short term, I mean, it's the midterm, right? Yet the short term is the temporary rubber ones, midterm is your option three, hey, we're doing this, this is what we're putting out to bid, and then getting feedback for the larger-scale second CIP project.
So, so this is in essence three phases, and, and phase one is going to happen, phase two is going to happen, and then the real question is, this phase two become part of phase three, which would be option one?
Or something.
Yeah, a hybrid of such, and, and, if it makes sense, look to try to implement elements of option three into whatever the new option one is, so we don't throw that money away and start from scratch.
Right, and I would just like to say, I would love to see us get more involved with the elementary school and their staff as well, because they live it every day.
Yeah.
And, and so in my mind, they're, they're a very critical piece, I mean, they see these kids come and go every year, and so for me, I think their, their opinion probably matters the. And so for me, I think their, their opinion probably matters the most to me, because they're engaged all the time.
And I, I would agree with that, I, and I think you said it's going to take a little time even for option three, to by the time you bid and everything. We could certainly do a little town hall at the school and invite people in, just to talk about what our plan is and say, you know, we're looking at something more long-term, but for safety reasons, this is what we want to do, and get input, and at least keep them informed, because I agree, we need to keep them engaged and informed of what's happening, so they're not surprised by things. So, that would be my, my thought, anyway.
Okay.
So are we?
I think I have direction, I've repeated it.
Gravy, that only took a few minutes, so I, I think we really need to take like a five-minute break. So thank you, William, for putting up with all our questions. Yes. But it makes my head hurt. Okay, I think we're ready to get started. You ready? All right, we're going to go on to item four, we're going to discuss and provide direction regarding council meeting start times. City Attorney, you going to give us a report?
Yes, Mayor and Council, so at the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting, the city council requested a future agenda item to consider moving the start time for city council meetings to nine AM. A change to that meeting start time will require an amendment to the municipal code of section two point oh four point oh five oh. And the timing associated with ordinance revisions is an introduction, and then it's brought back for adoption five days later, it needs to be at a regular meeting, that second part. And then thirty days after, it becomes effective.
Okay, uh, any questions from Council?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, two questions if I can, City Attorney, number one, I, I don't remember what, or I probably didn't see it in here either. What's the rationale for wanting to change the time?
It was a council request for wanting to change it, and I don't know what the rationale was behind it, I don't think that was explained.
Okay, you think it was or was not?
I don't think it was explained, but I, I don't remember, but your colleagues who brought it up would be able to let you know.
I think I can answer that, I think Councilmember Morales brought it up, I think one of the concerns we've had is meetings going on till all hours of the night and the wee hours of the morning, and how difficult it is after ten o'clock to be able to make important decisions, so we're trying to find a solution. And that was the suggestion that she had brought up, so I'm hoping we can have some questions and then discussion about it. So, um, do we have any more questions? Councilmember Burns, any questions, or?
I don't, I do have some comments, I'll reserve, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Perez, do you have questions? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Mayor Casey, there's no public comments for this item.
Okay, and let's have a little further deliberation, um, Councilmember Resentis, you want to start?
Not at this time, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I'm quite satisfied with every other Monday, or first and third Monday of the month, except when there's a holiday and it rolls into a Tuesday. I know this month is a classic example, because there's more work than time, that we've gone to three meetings in February. And I know we always have the potential to do special meetings as well. And so I would pose to this council that, why don't we go to three, or, or, or meet every, meet every Monday, or meet three Mondays out of the month. I, I just, it, to come in at nine in the morning, first of all, this is not a full-time job. The pay, um, is, is minimum, and I didn't take the job for the pay, but some of us have to work, matter of fact, I think all of us work. And so I would like to propose other options versus a nine AM, because yes, we could then take the meeting and go nine to, nine till noon, or nine till nine, I suppose. But, um, I think there was sound rationale why it was every, uh, first and third, uh, Monday of the month. And I don't see where, um, I, I've sat through some council meetings till, I think probably two, two fifteen in the morning, maybe one or two in my three years. And I get the fact that ten o'clock, and often I have to work the next day, and I, I, I work in Stockton. So, um, that's a long drive, but it hasn't been so problematic that I would suggest we change. But if we do, I would pose that option, thank you.
So your option that you were proposing was to do three, three meetings a month instead? Okay, um, uh, Councilmember Perez?
I'm, I'm all for it, I love it, I think, I, I, it's nine fif, nine thirteen right now, and it's like, I'm already, I'm already gone. I'm, well, not gone, but it's like, this gets to be too much after a while. And we make important decisions for our city, we should be, um, not that we're half asleep, but we should be able to think more clearly, I would say.
Okay, then Councilmember Morales?
Yes, I think it's not just for our city council to make sure that we are, um,
Fresh.
Fresh, but fully engaged, making sound decisions, oftentimes I feel that because it's so late, sometimes we're not understanding the material properly. Many of us get up really early, um, just to go to work, and so it does, it does impact not only that evening, but the next day as well. And I think we also have to think about our staff, there's several folks that commute out of the city to Los Baños, or Seaside, or other folks, um, other places, um, it does impact their lives and their livelihoods. It is dark, um, a lot of the roads are not well lit. Right now, it's really raining, sometimes we're impacted by the floods or other things, and so it's not just us. The public also, it's really hard for the public to stay until like one or two in the morning, or twelve, so that they can have input. So it's just not for us and our ability to make sound decisions, it's also for our staff and the community to be able to engage in, in, in a, in a process. So.
Okay, um, so, I mean, I, uh, I don't have a problem with a nine AM start time, I could make it work, but I understand that, you know, folks who do work, it might be problematic. I, my, my thought is, we, we do have an issue though, there, it's problematic either way. It is difficult when you're paying attention from the moment you get in, and then ten o'clock rolls around, and your eyes are starting to go, and you're trying to make, you know, this, sometimes million-dollar decisions. I don't like the idea of doing that when you're, you're worn out. And, and we've had, I don't know, Councilmember Burns, I guess you've been lucky, because I haven't been here that long, but we've had a number of meetings go past midnight, and, uh, I've been up till three and four in the morning trying to, you know, just chill after. So it does, it does wreck you for the next day. That said, suggested possible alternatives is to have an earlier start time, maybe at five o'clock instead of six-thirty, possibly doing a third meeting, or just having a hard ten o'clock stop regardless, and hopefully the city manager can manage the agenda so that we don't have too many items left over that we'll have to roll over. And maybe we do an optional third meeting when we get behind. You know, it's complicated, but, you know, I wanna support everyone being able to, you know, participate, but I do think it isn't work either way. I don't know that it's gonna work, you know, to do a nine a.m., and I don't know that keeping it at six-thirty is working, that, you know. I don't know whether we're giving our best after about ten or ten-thirty, so those are my thoughts, anyway. Councilmember Resendiz, did you wanna add anything?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. After hearing everybody speak, all I heard mostly was, I this, I that, but we're not really here, we're here to do the people's business, and I don't hear anybody saying how changing the time to nine a.m. is gonna affect the public participation. If we were to have a meeting at nine a.m., Mr. Principal Rios would not be able to be here. He has a school to manage and to do, and to work for. I see this as a, an obstacle put in the way of the public from participating in their local governing processes here, and it's not really about us. We chose to do this job. I love, and I'm so passionate about doing this job. It's not about the money. It's really about representing the people, and when I heard everybody speak here, I didn't hear much of that. So that's what concerns me the most. Am I open to doing three meetings a month? Sure, why not? We've done it in the past. But aside from that, I think that there's other ways of managing the agenda and maximizing our time up here in a more efficient way. I don't know if we practice that as a council. I'll be honest with you. I really don't know if we practice that as a council, and I'm guilty of it, too. So I would say that we probably should revisit what our practices are, but I would never suggest moving a city council meeting to nine a.m. when sixty-something percent of the public already is commuting out of here and not here in time to participate. We have a low turnout in participation already, so I see it as a, as an obstacle in democracy and having them participate. And I'm a teacher. You guys know that. I've never missed a day of work this year. If this were to pass, then I wouldn't be able to go to work. I wouldn't be able to be there with my kiddos. I'd have to be here, and I would do it because I'm very dedicated to the cause here. But, but, again, that's gonna cause some more challenges for my kiddos and for the public, but it really comes down to the public, not how inconvenienced we are. I'll be honest. Thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. So other alternatives could be, we don't meet in July, but yet we get paid for a month where we don't actually work as a council member on the dais. I'm not saying we don't work as council members, and in January, we have one meeting. So there's potentially at least three more meetings we could have to spread out over the, over the period of time. I will say, when I worked for the City of Fresno, as I recall, City of Fresno's council met at nine a.m. on Tuesdays, and there were times they would go until seven or eight p.m. And so, and they met weekly, but Fresno is not Hollister. It's the fifth biggest city in the state, and it's over half a million people, so they have a lot more business, frankly. I've worked in other areas. I currently work now where the board meets on a weekday as well, and so it's not inconceivable, and they still get turnout for public comment. When there are things of interest, they will be there. If it's important enough, they will come. And so I see the value. I liked your proposal, though. Today, open session began at six-thirty, closed session began at five, and so maybe we move it down till three o'clock for a closed session. And, you know, I believe negotiations requires compromise, and a good outcome is a result of a good compromise. And so I'm not opposed to lessening the time. I just don't see where a nine a.m. start on a Monday, you know, it works for me, frankly. I have three days off a week, and fortunately, one of them happens to be Monday, so it's not really about me or I. But I do think there's a reason why it was Monday, every other Monday, or every first and third. I think the rationale made sense. I think maybe just to bring the times down a little bit. We can try it. I mean, as I understand it, City Attorney, we can, we could amend the municipal code as many times as we want to figure it out and get it right. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And so I think I'm open to compromise. But, you know, if you guys wanna start it at seven-thirty in the morning on Mondays, I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Councilmember Perez, do you have anything to add?
I would counter that with a one o'clock start. But, I mean, if we're gonna start at one, we might as well start early in the morning. So I'm good with nine o'clock.
Anything further?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with nine, ten, eleven, twelve, one. I think it's, we're already, we already add, like, we're gonna have a joint planning session with the planning commission, so we're always adding meetings, plus if we're gonna do more strategic planning, we're gonna be adding more meetings. We've oftentimes had Saturday meetings. So if people are worried about working, I work, too. I commute out. I'm happy to hold the meetings on Saturday. I'm happy to be here at seven-thirty as well. I think, for me, it's challenging when it's like ten, or eleven, or twelve o'clock at night, if we are looking to be of sound mind and make decisions that are clear, and not, and be able to ask questions, and to have community participation at that time, it's really difficult.
Okay. I, I think we do have to find some kind of a compromise. I'm not sure what that looks like. I don't think it's unheard of to start at nine a.m. simply because, you know, our Board of Supervisors does it, and they do get people coming in, as you mentioned, Councilmember Burns. When it's important, they make the time and they come, so I don't think it's a hurdle from keeping anyone from coming, but I, I do understand the other commitments people have. Again, I'm, I'm open to any of it, 'cause I, you know, I have that flexibility in my schedule. But I do agree with Councilmember Morales, and it isn't about an "I" thing. It's about serving your community and being able to make sound decisions, because if you're tired and you make a dumb decision, it can cost the city a lot of money. And I would rather be alert and be able to maintain and do it at a decent hour, so that's my, my two cents for it. Yes, Councilmember?
As far as like, being concerned about losing time at work and stuff, let me tell you, if I don't go to work, I don't get money. I don't, don't, you know what, so it's, I'm, I'm taking the biggest, the biggest hit here, so I think it's well worth it.
So what's the will of the council? I mean, I, I'm not hearing.
Move to approve.
Well, we're giving direction, right? We're not, we're not voting.
I move to approve anyways. But, you know what, I'm not opposed to changing the hour. I mean, nine o'clock sounds good, because that way staff can get their stuff done and maybe have a couple hours to do something to catch up.
I honestly don't necessarily agree with that, Councilmember Perez, because if they're here at nine with us through the whole day, we've just now pretty much taken twenty percent of their work weight, or their regular workday away. And so.
Depending on how long the meeting is.
Well, historically, they tend to go five or six hours, and sometimes longer, so I don't know.
On an eight-hour day?
So.
So, or we could start later. We could start later, and then they can work overtime.
Which they're already doing.
Yeah, so that's not gonna work.
But then, department heads are salaried, aren't they? So actually, that's not true.
You sure?
I just got a lot of head bobs saying, yeah. So.
I know. No, I'm just saying, it's like, we didn't know they're salaried, really.
So are we saying, I mean, are we interested in any kind of a compromise? Are we willing to try an earlier start time at four, or something like that?
My question would be, what time are you done with work, Roland?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this, 'cause I did hear you bring up a good point about coming in on Saturday. I'm willing to come in on Saturday, and I, the reason I think it's better to come in on a Saturday than to change the time is because then the public is home. They're not working, they're not commuting. So they have the opportunity to come in and participate, either after they get home from work or during a Saturday. And we have the ability to do that now with a special meeting. So that would be my suggestion. Let's do two Mondays and a Saturday, and see how that works.
No. Saturdays are out.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I feel about Saturdays, in part because I don't always get to spend time with my husband, and he is home on the weekends. So I hate to give that up, and also, I do attend a lot of events on weekends for the community, and I don't wanna lose those, so that's just my feelings about it, anyway.
I'm good at nine.
I'm fine at nine.
I'm good at nine.
Monday at nine.
I'd say Monday at three.
Monday at eleven.
I'd say Monday at four.
Back to nine.
I don't think we're getting anywhere here. Is there, is, is three or four a possibility for you, Councilmember Resendiz? You know, from when you get out of school?
I can be here at four o'clock every day without conflicting with my work hours, my contracted work hours.
So could we try a four o'clock start time and
That's fine.
Do a hard, fast stop at ten and see how we do?
That's fine with me, but again, my only concern is public participation.
So, but, I hear what you said, but if we start at four, usually that's gonna be closed session, and there is no public participation. We just come out, and historically, it's usually about an hour. I mean, they could be here for public comment at the beginning before going to closed session, but, and again, if it doesn't work, well, number one, if we, I do agree with the mayor, hard stop at ten, and if we have business that rolls over, it rolls over. I mean, and so we'll have to figure out the priorities so that we get a succinct agenda to get the business business done, because the city needs to function regardless of our schedule or the council meetings. And so I have seen a lot of things that have been put in consent, and sometimes I worry about some of them, but ultimately, I think we've, we've gone to a much more consent-agenda-oriented council in this past year, and I think that there's a lot of value to that. And so I think we just need to, we being me, speak less, listen more, and, and just move it forward. But, but I think a hard stop at ten with a nice launch at four, and worst-case scenario, it doesn't work, and so we'll shift it. I think we have the capacity to do that, and so, in my mind, either way, I'm leaving work early to be here, and so I don't care whether it's nine a.m. or, but I think four is better, because then we're not gonna monopolize the, the department heads Mondays as well as we do, we do monopolize them now, but after they're already closed to the public.
Or we just take their sleep. If I may.
Yes.
So we're all changing the whole schedule because one teacher, he has, he's a teacher, and he's the one that was just talking about how it's not about me, it's about serving. So what's wrong with nine o'clock, then? Why don't we start with nine and see how that works?
I would say, and I can't speak for him, but I'm going to, apparently, he's got a contract, and so I would believe he executed that contract under the good faith belief that council meetings were gonna start, the earliest one I've seen, I don't know, four, maybe, but, but if he's under a contractual obligation, and so now we're gonna change the rules for our convenience, I don't know that I can buy into that.
Well, with that, isn't there, isn't there, don't they have sick pay and time off and PTO and all of those things in those contracts? Salaried? I mean, I, I'm not, I don't get paid. I'm not getting paid when I come here. I don't get paid when, when I'm gonna take time off, which, what's the big deal? I thought it wasn't about us. It's about the functioning of us to make decisions for our community. That's what it's about.
I'm not hearing a lot of consensus here. Is there any will to try the four o'clock and see how that works, or are we hard and fast on nine a.m.?
Madam Mayor, I think I did hear consensus from the council for four p.m.
Did I? Did you guys?
Not me.
I'm, I'm fine with it. Worst-case scenario is it doesn't work, and we're having a follow-up conversation, or we have more data that says it didn't work.
Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yes.
One thing I didn't hear you discuss is you were going back and forth with a four o'clock start time, I think I heard, depending on closed session. Some cities do closed session at the end of the meeting as well, so that's something you could consider as well, because under our current setup now, if you had a four p.m. and we had an hour and a half of closed session, then the meeting starts at five-thirty for the public, right? Right now, we have a standard time for the public, regardless of closed session, and we work backwards from that. So if you were, your aim was to complete sooner, one option is, you know, closed session is your determination of whether you have it at the beginning or the end of the meeting, so.
So are you saying to go to closed session, excuse me, after the meeting? After four o'clock, or after the six o'clock meeting?
Well, the meeting is still going. It's, there's, it's a council discretion as to when you host your closed session.
Councilmember Burns?
You know, I actually like that a lot, because today was a perfect example. We were in closed session, we ran it past the six-thirty start, as I recall, it got real close, and so it gives us an opportunity to continue the closed session if we have a need to, but it also doesn't inconvenience the public to sit and wait if we do run over. And so I would like to try that as well. I think that's smart.
I wouldn't mind trying that, starting at nine.
So. I haven't heard you weigh in at all on options, Councilmember Resendiz. Do you have any options that you're willing to try? Of either of these two options?
What two options are on the table?
One was a four o'clock start time, and one was a nine o'clock start time.
As opposed to keeping it to six o'clock, six-thirty? So I said that I personally can make nine or four. I'll, I'll have to. I will figure it out. Contractually, I can be here at four without breaking my contract work-wise, but my, again, my number one concern is public participation, and how can we make sure that we're accommodating them, not necessarily just us? So I like the idea of Saturday, but if it's up to me, if you're just asking me, so you're saying you're willing to do four, he's willing to do four?
Two people willing to do four, two people willing to do nine, so you could help make a decision here, as far as a direction.
I don't think that we should change it, I'll be honest with you. I don't think we should change it.
So we don't have any consensus, then? I'm not.
Nothing changes then.
No stress training.
So, I mean, Roland attended committees, and they were during the day, and that didn't, you know, violate his contract.
What committees did I attend during the day that didn't?
Prior to, prior to.
Which committees are you talking about?
I don't know what your committee is.
It's not true.
They would start at four.
No, the days, he had all the committees that were in the evening. They set it up that way.
Okay. I'm willing to do, I'm willing to look at three or four. I just don't wanna end up back to the same, you know, we're, we're done at ten, and then we go to closed session until, you know, whatever. What would be the, what would be the hard stop, then, if we started? And if we had closed session?
Because we're gonna end up Still, a hard stop at ten.
For closed session as well?
For everything. I don't, you know, I don't wanna be stretching it beyond, so.
So then we'll be done at, we have to stop at eight-thirty?
Or we could leave closed session first and have a hard stop at ten, and I'm fine. If you wanna do three, I'll do three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm better with three. I think that way we just are not running into the same issue. So if we're looking, if we look at the problem statement, and if we end up back to where we always were, it doesn't, the solution doesn't matter. If you wanna do three, I'm open to doing three.
I can do three or four, so, and I'm fine with that, but I think hard stop at ten, and then just see how it goes, and see how our schedule, if we get things done or not, or if we have to do additional meetings or whatever.
Then why don't we start at two? That way, we have a ten-hour, eight-hour period, too.
I think anytime we go beyond six hours for a meeting where you're having to concentrate, it doesn't matter. I think anytime we go beyond six hours for a meeting where you're having to concentrate, it doesn't matter, eh, even if it's earlier in the day. I mean, I, it, it wears you out, so I think of.
Been doing it for a while.
Hmm?
It's, I've been doing it for a while.
Yeah, I've been trying to do it, but it does get pretty tiring after about six hours. So, I just think four to ten, let's do a hard stop and, and see how that works. And we can change it if we decide earlier is better, or, I mean, it's not carved in stone, but at least it'll give us a chance to try something new. Four to ten or three to ten?
I can take either or. I, I, I really don't care.
Can we do three?
And as a reminder, Madam Mayor, I'm contractually able to be here without breaking my contract at four PM. That gives me fifteen minutes to get to work from work to here. Just putting that out there as a reminder.
So, why don't we try four and see if it works? And if it doesn't, we will without.
Do you know what? Hey, Roland, what time do you want to start? Let's just start at whatever time you want. That's what, that's what we're saying here. It's like, you guys, it's ridiculous. I'm going to, I lose money out anyways. You guys, are you guys going to pay for my customers? Pay my wage? Because you're taking, you're watching out for him.
Well, I don't think it's watching out. We're talking about contracts and also children. My daughter is a teacher and it, and when she's out, it is a problem. So, I'd, I'd hate to have him be out twice a month on a regular basis that I, I do, you know, I am concerned about the kids. So, I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to interfere with the school day. If four, if we could try four o'clock and see, if it becomes an issue and a problem, then we can change it and we can talk about earlier. But I just, I think we do have to consider everybody, so.
Really?
Hmm, yep. So, can we give this a try or not? And what's the consensus?
I'm fine. Four to ten, hard stop.
Okay, let's try it.
So, Madam Mayor, i- if we can get some clarity for when we bring it back. So, right now, we have it in our, you know, the regular meeting starts at four thirty and then we, uh, six thirty, I'm sorry. And then, and then we, you know, we, we work backwards for our closed session. So, if we are saying four o'clock, is that your regular meeting? And if so, under the current practice, closed session would start before. So, we would need direction on basically, I mean, if you want every meeting to start at four, we're basically doing closed session at the end.
What's your thought? Thanks, David. I thought we had it. I know we have to consider closed session, um.
So, I mean, the only option is to have it after.
That's a time certain for the public.
So, so one other thing you could do is start your meeting at four, closed sessions, it could be part of your regular meeting.
It doesn't have to be a special meeting for closed session. Closed session starts at four. As soon as closed session is done, you go out to your regular meeting. And that could be fifteen minutes. It could be half an hour. It could be an hour and a half. Some cities do that.
Yeah, absolutely does, yeah. That works too.
So, closed session at four with the.
And then, yeah, if there's no closed session, you go.
Have to let, because don't we have to let the public know when the meetings are going to start?
It will start at four.
So.
And they would wait just like they waited tonight for however long or other times when you've gone till seven for your closed session. That's just an option.
So, one of the things in another jurisdiction where I wor- have worked, they start their meeting and, and they'll go through, uh, public comment. And then they will typically take consent items and then they will break for closed session. And then they'd often come back an hour or two later and, and begin again.
And that is, I've seen communities do that as well with closed session in the middle.
Supervisors do that as well, I think.
Hmm, I don't know.
They break in the middle of the, yeah.
And it works.
No, we could do that and then that way, if we don't get to items after and it won't make us be later and we can start at four.
Yeah, typically, you see them doing that in, in your daytime meetings, because they're typically working a lunch in as part of closed as well.
We can do that. We can work dinner in. I like that idea. All right, so, are we going to, we'll, we'll try the four to ten with a break in the middle for any closed session? Is that what we're doing? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got consensus.
Okay. Jennifer, do you have what you need?
I have. It'll be a little challenging for logistics, but yes, we, four o'clock regular meeting, first and third Mondays still, right?
Yes.
Unless it's a holiday and then it falls to the next Tuesday.
Which stays a regular meeting and thank you for putting that in the code. It makes my life a lot easier.
And just as a reminder, this is an ordinance revision, so it wouldn't take effect until after we bring it back twice and then thirty days after that.
Got it. All right, so we're going to move on then to item five. Um, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, a resolution of the City Council. City of Hollister approving an agreement for out-of-jurisdiction sewer service and directing staff to make an application to local agency formation commission, LAFCO, for the city to provide sewer services outside of its jurisdictional boundaries but within the sphere of influence. Staff report?
Thank you, City Council. Amber Cameron, Senior Planner. The item before you tonight is to consider a resolution that would establish that the city would provide sewer services to the property located at nine thirty Hillcrest Road, um, located outside of the city's of Hollister's jurisdictional boundary, but within the sphere of influence upon the authorization of the LAFCO Agency Formation Commission. The City of Hollister received an application, um, back in September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to provide sewer services outside of the city, city's jurisdiction, um, sorry, out of the city's jurisdictional boundary. But within the city's, um, sphere of influence for the property as mentioned, nine thirty Hillcrest. Um, you'll be able to see it on this map. Um, it's indicated with the APN as well. Um, the property is located within a county island, which is surrounded by the city and is contiguous to the city limits along its western boundary. The parcel itself is approximately point twenty-eight acres with an existing nine hundred and eighty-four square foot single-family residence, a one thousand five hundred ninety-six square foot shop and a six hundred and thirty-eight square foot detached garage on site. Um, it's currently being served by septic tank and a leach field. The owners have stated that the existing septic tank does not meet current environmental health standards and that there's no room for the property to install an additional line in the future. The request is to be able to tie into the city's sewer, um, services before the tank, the septic tank fails and the leach field becomes an emergency to public health and a safety situation, um, and a further threat to groundwater. The nearest sanitary sewer connection is a twelve-inch line that's located in the front of the property in Hillcrest Road, as you'll see on this slide. The resolution before you tonight will approve an agreement with the property owner of nine thirty Hillcrest Road for the provisions of service. The agreement includes a provision for non-protest, a future annexation when called upon by the city. Additionally, it has been noted that the city is agreeing to provide services to the existing residents and the property as is described. The agreement does not authorize further development of the property and utilization of the city's sewer services for any such development. If approved by the City Council, the resolution authorizes staff to prepare and submit out-of-jurisdiction sewer application to LAFCO on behalf of the property owner for this request. That concludes my report. Staff is recommending that City Council approve the resolution, um, allowing staff to move forward and take the application forward to LAFCO.
All right, do we have questions from council? Councilmember Resendez, any questions? Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. What would it take to move forward with the annexation of this property? It seems like it should be within the city, uh, jur- or city boundaries anyway. I, I understand it's a, an incorporated, isolated property, but, and I, I heard you say that they wouldn't oppose it. So, why wouldn't we just do that?
That's correct. Um, I'm going to defer to my manager just because this is a, a whole county island. We don't typically take in one property, so I'll allow her to discuss what it would look like if we were taking in several other properties with it.
Yes, so the application to annex, we could apply for one property. The city doesn't have any current procedures beyond a general plan policy to try to incorporate islands. But you would need to get a majority vote of all of the property owners. So, if, um, we were being directed by the council, I would recommend that there be a significant outreach, um, effort to the community in the island to identify what annexation would mean. A lot of times, there's confusion about, you know, if you need to hook up to sewer right away or hook up to city utilities, that's not necessarily the case. But, um, part of the policies in the current, but also more strict in the, um, proposed general plan update is to really kind of have a city effort to annex some of these islands. So, um, for the annexation of this individual property, it would just be an application. I don't know that there's necessarily a LAFCO pro or con. And it, it's a pro of annexing a small portion of an island, but it's a con that you're technically leaving an island. Um, it's a little bit of a gray area in LAFCO law. Technically, the formation of islands is not allowed in LAFCO law. So, I think some of these islands came about from protests of other annexation areas. And so, they ended up getting kind of grouped together as part, parts and parcels around annexed and they did not. So, as far as the process, it'd be the same generally as any other annexation. But you'd have to look at, there's a lot of different property owners involved in these islands and kind of small portions. And then you look at owners who want to annex versus owners who don't and percentages of land and those types of things. It's definitely easier when you have one parcel, one property owner who's willing. But as the city potentially enters into these out-of-jurisdiction service agreements and then you have that non-protest clause and this records against the property, then you might have a better chance at annexing larger portions of these islands in the future.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Um, and council, if I could, um, this single annexation request, um, it's a city employee that owns that property. Just wanted it to be fully transparent.
Councilmember Perez, you have questions? Do you have any? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor Casey, we have one public speaker for Carson Clower.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your consideration and hopeful approval of this item. I'd like to thank staff for all their work on this. Uh, as you can see, the, uh, number of the application is twenty twenty-two dash one, so this one's been going for a bit. Different iterations, different other things got approved along the way. And, and I think all of the work that you've done with out-of-jurisdiction has led us to this situation. Um, so hopefully, uh, we can get this kind of put, at least started to be put to bed. Um, the Cannells have signed the document, um, so they're okay with the terms. It's, it's probably not the best, uh, deal, but it is what it is. We would like to move forward and, and get this taken care of and, and get them off of that old, small septic system that, uh, just like most of their neighbors have septic systems that are too small and would never be approved under the new guidelines. Um, so I do think this is, um, it's good for the applicant. Um, I think it's good for the environment. And I think it's, it's good for the city to have, um, more ratepayers coming online that should be paying already. So, I, I think my personal perspective is that if you can, I think it's in your general plan update that you do, at some point, should annex these islands. It doesn't make a lot of sense to leave them out there. Um, people don't know who they're being served by. Um, people tend to do kind of weird stuff when they're not really, um, to code with, with what they have. Because if they, if they come out and say, hey, I need a permit, they say, well, you can't, you can't get a permit, which is kind of why we are here where we are, because they, they wanted to expand the system. There's not enough room. Um, so hopefully, this is just another step toward fixing some of the, uh, out-of-jurisdiction issues you have. And, um, I'll be here when you guys kind of continue that process. So, if you have any questions, I'm here. Thanks so much and thank you, staff, again.
Thank you.
Those are all the public comments we have for this item.
Okay, uh, further deliberation from council. Uh, Councilmember Resendez, any thoughts? Councilmember Burns?
I would like to maybe explore annexation of that, that island when staff has time. I, I recognize this is not a high priority given the other work, but it makes perfect sense. And, and if we do have a property where the septic is failing, usually they're, they have a life expectancy. And my sense is, we're going to be going down this path again and.
His motion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us to our committee assignments. Councilmember Burns, do you have any committees you want to report on?
I don't, but after the meeting, I do want to talk with you about one, um, that I'm waiting to hear on. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Perez, any meetings? Councilmember Morales?
With AMBEC, we are going to be, we, we, um, we created a committee to do community outreach and engagement of vulnerable populations. So, we will be meeting with the, um, CEO to create a work plan. So, we're looking forward to providing opportunities to, um, the residents of Hollister for air quality and electrification of projects.
Okay. Just one to report. We had our COG Highway twenty-five workshop. It was kind of an all-day workshop. And we had the team from Caltrans District Five in, as well as some consultants and other state folks. Uh, so we got quite a history lesson on the decades of work on Highway twenty-five and kind of where we're at now and trying to find a path to move forward, uh, to move forward. One of the things we learned is that there's been significant changes at the state level, um, which impact the Highway twenty-five expansion project, especially involving, um, the impacts of the travel. It used to be calculated by level of service. And now, it looks at vehicle miles traveled. So, we have to find ways to mitigate those impacts, um, on an expansion project like this. We have to do, look at things like public transit and rail and other ways of offsetting GHG. So, that there's going to have to be some shifting there. Um, and what we learned is that in order to get the funding that we're going to need, we have to, if we really want to get funded, we have to look at this and figure out something. So, we may have to make some modifications and we're not sure what that's going to look like. The current ticket, it's, it's expanded quite a bit in costs, so they're talking about somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred million. So, of course, it's going to have to be completed in segments, which we had already started, at least one segment of. Um, and we'll have more information to share with the public soon. And then I think there's going to be an input, uh, like a, a community meeting to gather input from, from the residents and as we start to move forward and start a redesign or, or look at it again. So, that's, that was that meeting, so.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
Was it two hundred million before and it jumped all the way to six to eight? Is that what I'm understanding?
Say that again?
I thought it was two twenty million, two hundred and twenty million.
Well, maybe a few years ago, but.
And it's all the way to six to.
Current estimate is six hundred, eight hundred million dollars, yes. So, we definitely can't do that with Measure G, so we're going to have to get some funding, so, that, more to come on that. So, now council reports, uh, Councilmember Resendez.
Uh, no- nothing too much to report. I just want to say thank you to the Public Works Department, um, when it's raining and, and trees are going down. I think about you guys out there. Uh, they don't get to stay home with their families. They're out there cleaning up our streets and picking up all these trees and branches. So, thank you for your hard work and dedication to keep us nice and safe.
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do have a few items. So, um, I've recently been contacted by a person that lives on San Benito Street and, uh, another concerned citizen about the speeding once they hit the traffic light, um, there in front of country roads. And so, I would like to see some action on that. It seems like it's a drag strip and I've not only heard that from this individual, but others as well. I, I don't know how we slow it down. Uh, my understanding is there may be an engineering report on it already. But I would like to have, uh, an update on that at some point if the council is so supportive. Also, received, uh, contact from, uh, a constituent in Sunny Slope that is reporting reoccurring thefts at the gang mailboxes or apparently being broken into. And as I recall, we do have, uh, cameras on both ends of Beverly. And so, I, I would hope that the PD maybe could take a look at that to see if, uh, if, if there's a way to figure out who's responsible. I wanted to talk for a moment about animal control as well. I recently got a, uh, an opportunity to contribute to the Monterey County SPCA as a nonprofit. I, I will be doing that because I'm committed to that. But, but my question is, uh, I know as a city agency, we're not a nonprofit, but it seems like a great way to raise money for underfunded or historically challenged financial programs. I don't know how we could work that into our animal control, but it seems like a brilliant idea because there are people that do want to give money that are passionate about animals. And so, I, I'm happy to share what that actually looks like if anybody is interested. I do want to take a moment to thank the San Benito County Planning Commission for, uh, doing the right thing, in my opinion, as it relates to the envi- an environmental report for. for the hazardous or the dump, uh, expansion. Thank you. Um, I'm hoping that the board will do likewise, or at least let folks vote to make that decision. But thank you, Planning Commission, uh, for the county. I think you did a great job, and you really vetted it before you pulled the trigger. Also would like to know more about what the Bulldog Boxing's needs are, because I absolutely have an appetite to find a way to help, uh, take care of some of their their expenses. This county has shown a will to do that, and so I think as a council, we, I'd like to hear more about what that looks like. We've seen the results, uh, stand before us today, and and those are the champions. But there's a lot of kids that are caught up in that, and and that's a great program, has been for decades. And so I'd like to figure out how to make that, uh, even more successful if we can as a council. And I know they're a nonprofit, so. Also would like to have an update on the SNIP bus. That kind of thing just caught me by surprise, and I'm not really sure what the contract is versus what it was before. But I understand their passion. I also understand why, when you're going to spay or neuter an animal, that's the perfect time to give them the vaccinations as well. And, um, so I would like to know more about that, because I would like to support to some degree. If there's a challenge, I think there are ways to get to a better position if I could clearly understand what our current position is as a city. And then finally, um, I would like to ask this council to consider creating an ad hoc committee for cannabis, and I would like to sit on that committee. And I would also suggest that councilmember Morales, if she has the capacity, be involved in that, uh, as well. And so that will complete my comments for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, councilmember Perez.
I I, um, agree with Bulldog Boxing. Also, um, I'd like to see if we could switch positions on, with AMBAG, with Dolores Morales. What else? Did you said something else? Oh, the SNIP bus, yeah, I'd like to hear more about that, too.
All right, councilmember?
Um, so I attended a couple of different events. Um, one was by an organization called Proximity, where they had, um, are celebrating diversity and talking, uh, and normalizing conversations about race. Um, so just want to, um, say that they did a phenomenal job. I hope, um, February, I want to say, second of 2025 is their next event, and I hope that we can help promote that event next year. Um, also, there was an event by the Hollister High School on robotics. There was employers and, um, high school, high schoolers that demonstrated their skill sets. That was very nice to see kind of our community show up and support them. Um, also went to a swearing and, um, ceremony for new leadership for the San Benito Lodge, number 20, uh, 211. I just want to say that I was, um, kind of embraced by the community, kind of like a community hug. It was such a beautiful and loving environment. Um, I've, in all my years in community service, I've never experienced anything like it. So I just wanted to say thank you to their leaders and, um, learned about their services. We hope we can, uh, partner, um, in the spirit of serving our community. And their act of, their, um, their love language is act of service, so that's, uh, that's beautiful. I think we pair very nicely. I also wanted to wish the community, um, a happy Lunar New Year, which is February the 10th this weekend. Um, and also February marks the Black History Month, so I hope we can, um, also celebrate. I don't know if we do a proclamation or, I don't know what we do as a city. Can we do something? Uh, so that will be an ask for council to declare February Black History Month. I'm going to be asking for the council to consider having GARE, which is Governance Alliance on Race and Equity, be part of, um, the city's leadership program. And basically, it's a framework for government to normalize, organize, and operationalize, looking at race equity, um, work and the contributions of government. And as Rick had mentioned, um, it is really important that we align, um, AMBAG and COG. So depending on whether, uh, Mayor Casey has the capacity, um, we do need to align COG and AMBAG. Um, their Wednesday's at 6 o'clock, I'm happy to take it. But if if it, um, seems suitable to for you to go to that, both COG and AMBAG need to be aligned. Um, I also wanted to, again, thank, um, the fire department, our community service, um, department head, and all the staff, the city, city manager, staff for the the fire, um, still hearing how people feel really, um, supported, communication, the support, um, the work. We're still hearing it in the community. Um, I also wanted to recognize, um, members of the community. And we have, I haven't fully identified, but I do want to do a formal recognition for the people that volunteered for that, for the fire. Um, one in particular, um, is Marko Barber, but I know that there was a lot of key community players that played a role in just helping, um, and supporting the city and and just supporting our community.
Thank you. So before I start, I have to ask the clerk, I asked you about a proclamation, and I didn't write it down. So if you have that, I'll I'll go through my list, and then you can tell me a- at the end. So I did attend quite a few events, actually. I went to the Gavlin College Topping Out Ceremony, and it's amazing that they have the framework up, and we were able to sign the very last beam as, and then it was lifted into place on a crane, which was pretty exciting. So they're really making progress, and so hopefully, we'll be seeing a new campus before we know it. I went to an event called Indigenous Voices at the epicenter, and it featured a filmmaker photographer named Kurtie Basendine, who's been creating short films documenting and interacting with different tribes in California. And she shared short films that featured some of our local indigenous leaders, uh, like Val Lopez of the Amet Mutson Tribe, Canyon Sayers Rude and Anne Marie Sayers of the Indian Canyon Mutson Band of Costanoan Olone People. It was a really interesting, um, event, and she was actually, uh, up in San Francisco at the De Young Museum. She had an exhibit there before she came here and shared with us, so it was pretty exciting. I also attended the Free, it was the Freemasons, uh, San Benito Lodge that, uh, councilmember Morales mentioned. I was also at that. They were installing their new officers, and it was a really nice, a very formal ceremony, and it was in our iconic clock tower building, which they happen to own. So it was really fabulous to be in there and to see this. And, uh, I have to agree with councilmember Morales that the group is incredible, and they're very, uh, welcoming and, um, much like the Elks and Rotarian groups, they're all about service. And I had not only the outgoing grandmaster, but the incoming grandmaster offer to help and volunteer. And I did kind of steer them towards Hovenas, because I know they're always looking for volunteers. So you may be getting, uh, contacted by by some of them, but they want to help the city. They're trying to get out there, so, um, there's that. I did also attend this, the high school's, uh, Technology Day. It was at Stradivari Innovation Center, and it was really incredible seeing all the students' work and the robotic programs and the software programming they were doing. And and then kind of going from the students' work to, they had colleges there, they had Gavlin, and they had UC Merced there, talking about pathways that the students could, you know, for higher ed. And then we had businesses there, we had TechNova and, um, Granite Rock. And, uh, there was a company called Blue River Technologies that I was particularly interested in, because they, uh, they create robotics and AI kind of things around tractors. And, uh, John Deere just bought them, and they're looking to expand a little. So we had a nice conversation about how great it would be if they did that in Hollister. So since AgTech is something we're we're interested in. Um, so there was that, and I also attended the Proximity Event, which is fabulous. This is the second year they've done it, and, um, it's part of the Black History Month events that they're starting to do. They had a wonderful group called Kumba, which is a dance and drum group. And again, we had those great discussions around equity and shared experiences, so it was a really cool event. The one other meeting that I thought might be worth talking about is I did, uh, sit down with Speaker Rivas last week. Uh, we had a cup of coffee and talked about RENA numbers. And, uh, I, you know, shared some of what we had discussed about how large our numbers are compared to surrounding cities and discussed how the calculations don't seem quite right and, uh, the difficulties we have with some of the conflicting priorities of the state around wanting us to build housing, but also preserve agriculture and our need for infrastructure and expanding Highway 25. So we talked about all of that. He did tell me that, um, a lot of the jurisdictions across the state are having the same difficulties around RENA and the calculations. So, um, it is being looked at, no promises. Um, but he also took kind of an outline that I had created for him about a kind of our situation, and he was going to share it. He has an aide who works directly with Housing and Community Development Office, so they're, they're going to, um, he's going to have her, or him or her, I don't know, follow up with that office. So we'll see what comes of it. But, um, one of the things I did discover, which was a little discouraging, um, in trying to prepare for that meeting, is that, um, you know, we had, uh, the RENA numbers did come before COG, and I'm not sure what transpired, but they came before COG in 2022, and the COG Board voted to approve those numbers. And there actually is an appeal process for pushing back at that time. There's like a 45-day period or something, and and that didn't happen. So we're kind of out of the appeals process, so I'm not sure if we can do anything with our numbers, but I'm not going to give up. So I'll just keep talking to people until someone maybe listens. And the only other thing I have to add is that, uh, tomorrow, I'm going to be, uh, judge on a championship spelling bee at the Vets Hall. So that's going to be kind of fun, though. Um, as far as the things mentioned, um, the Bulldog Boxing, I am absolutely supportive of of, uh, Zeke Lopez and the work he's done. I can tell you that I've had conversations with him, and I do know that he pays not only for the the boxing lessons for a lot of the younger kids, but he also pays to take them on these events, puts them up in hotels and things. And that's where a lot of his expenses, where he's trying to raise money and does fundraisers and things. So there is definitely a need there. I know he struggles, um, with trying to provide for all the kids and not turn anybody away. I would also like to, I agree with councilmember Burns on the animal control, the SNIP bus contract, and learning a little more about what's changed and if we can do, uh, some kind of vaccinations. I am in support of an ad hoc committee for cannabis. And the proclamation, do you remember what it was for?
Yes, it's for the San Benito Health Foundation's Give Kids a Smile event on February 23rd.
So if we could get an okay for that, we could prepare it.
And did you want a proclamation or a certificate?
Yeah, I I think they they were getting proclamations, so I'd love to do that if we could. And as far as AMBAG, uh, switching, I'm fine with that if if the council is fine with it, uh, switching, uh, councilmember Perez with councilmember Morales. And I think that's it.
So I'm just going to go through my notes and make sure I've captured everything here, so bear with me. So, councilmember Burns, you had mentioned the speeding on San Benito. That is something we're looking at, and we brought something before you. It's one of the studies we'll be doing, so that works underway. You had animal control or, uh, looking at nonprofit exploration, so, um, if that's something that is, you know, the council would like Chief and I to take a look at, we can come back with something, you know, initial findings. I'm seeing two.
Can you remind me what that was about again?
So some agencies will form their own nonprofit as a fundraising vehicle to accept donations that are, you know, tax write-offs and have a, uh, a nonprofit that helps support the mission of the city or of a particular department.
Got it. Yeah, sure.
I heard Bulldog Boxing, three comments about it. Um, I heard three comments about the SNIP bus. Um, just to add some clarification to the comments that were made earlier, um, the existing contract before was March of '22 through June '23, 2023. Um, that contract did not get fully expended. We did do a no-cost extension to get them through the end of December. That was a contract at $3,600 per month with no vaccines, looking right at the contract right now. Um, we, uh, multiple times mentioned that the contract was over come December 31st, and we were willing to renegotiate and look at that. We did receive a bill in the very, uh, maybe January 1st or 2nd for services being rendered three weeks from that date for a January, uh, clinic. Uh, we informed them that they were out of contract and to work with us. That also had, uh, they had also billed us for a clinic, I want to say in November or December, that had vaccines on it and was a higher price than the contracted amount. And so we rejected those. We we pay at the level that we contract at. Regardless if costs have gone up from the time that they sign the contract or not, we have a duty to the citizens and citizens or residents of the community to hold our vendors to the contract that they sign. So that's where that confusion came in. In the contract that, uh, Chief Reynoso has been working on, it's actually been going back and forth for signature today. That's at 3,750 for a clinic. There was not, uh, vaccines included in that. There was a comment that vaccines are required, that's required of owners, if if I am correct. There is not a a condition in our ordinance that it's required of feral cats. Feral cats do not have owners. And, um, he also asked, as part of the contract, to receive a brief listing of where those cats were located from and the number of cats, and to have a system in place to track them, so we're not capturing maybe the same cat over and over again. That's a possibility, although maybe rare. So that was what was asked of of our chief in the process. And that, uh, vaccine rate went from 3,600 to the contract that's in front of us is 3,750, so. Uh, that contract's actually within my authority, so if that is something that I'm hearing to hold on, that's something we can take a step back, otherwise we're going to have to, you know, negotiate an amendment to the contract if they go ahead and execute it, because it's been rotated or, uh, being circulated for signature. So, um, there may have been vaccines in the past that were being provided. They may have been being paid, but as we're working with our finance department and going through and comparing invoices of our vendors to the contracts that are signed, we will reject invoices that are not aligned with the payments that we negotiated and executed. Councilmember Morales had a request to do a proclamation for Black History Month for the month of February. Uh, you mentioned a particular program, GARE, I wasn't sure exactly.
It's called Government Alliance on Race and Equity. It's second, it's always mentioned in the leadership program that was here last.
Okay.
It's what it's called, but that's the whole program.
So a presentation on the program to the council?
No, just incorporated in the leadership program.
The, oh, that the, okay. So spread that news to the, uh, the group that came and presented it the last time, okay. A recognition for those involved in the response to the fire, the community volunteers? Proclamation for the Health Foundation Day that Jennifer had mentioned. Uh, switching councilmember Perez and Morales on their, on the AMBAG assignment.
So just to clarify, um, councilmember Perez will take AMBAG, and I'm going to take his M-bag. They sound similar, but they're different.
So AMBAG to councilmember Perez, M-bag to councilmember Morales. And then an ad hoc committee for cannabis. Um, it had been mentioned in a previous item, councilmember Burns and Morales, but at this point, I just heard support for an ad hoc. So if, I would ask it if, you know, if if that is the will of the council to, you know, is it councilmember Burns and Morales?
Are you okay with that? Yeah, let's move ahead with that.
And that is all I have for the items. Uh, the few of the other ones you had, Mayor Casey, were the the third vote, so I'm going through each of yours. So that is all.
Okay. Then, city manager report?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Any, it says informational memoranda, is that? Any comments on previous requests?
Any comments on previous requests made to staff?
That's just the council project list.
It's just a, so we don't need to talk about that. So could I get a motion to adjourn, then?
Smooth.
All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, motion carries five zero. Meeting's now adjourned.
Mayor, I have a quick question for you, I saw an email fly last week.
Recording stopped.